Patrick?
Yes, sir.
The first hour, I'm gonna turn the gavel over to you to just read it.
Okay. I'll take it from the mayor.
Until time runs near, I'll start, I'll chime in.
Thank you, sir.
Are we ready?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Well, I would like to welcome the Sterling team. Good to have you with us today. And the Sterling team is the group that's interested in developing the Lemons property. Good to have you with us. And I'm gonna go ahead and read one statement that we read in every meeting, every workshop. "The purpose of this pre-application meeting is to review your sketch, plan of the proposed development. This process is non-binding and is simply an informal review of the development proposal[51.82][51.82]intended to provide information to the applicant on the procedure and policies of the town of Indian Trail and does not confer upon the applicant any development rights."
Okay. Let me just set this aside. Give us a moment for technology.
Okay.
Good afternoon. Thank you very much. My name is Stillman Knight. I'm here on behalf of the Sterling Group. The Sterling Group is a vertically-integrated developer of multifamily properties. We are pleased to have this opportunity to give you our initial thoughts, and we're also pleased to have the opportunity to discuss this with several of your staff. So hopefully, we're getting to a more refined point. If you will look on your screens, the first slide, we don't have a marketing name for this, but right now, Indian Trail Luxury Apartment Homes. The site area, I think everybody's familiar with. If I can, in red here, we basic, excuse me, trying to do this left-handed. We have this parcel under site control, except for the corner. That's not part of our proposal. Basically, our proposal will incorporate a 268-unit apartment development back here, and up on the frontage, a hotel site. This is just a close-up of what you saw earlier. I think everybody's generally familiar with it. And I'm gonna kind of move on through this, Patrick, so we have more time for discussion. As I mentioned, we're a fully-integrated company. We've built over 25,000 apartment units throughout the southeast and the Midwest. By vertically-integrated, we have our own construction company, our own property management company, and of course, the finance, sales, and development part of the company. This is for your information only, but this is a list of the last 12 or so developments that we have done. We'd love to have you check out any one of them, but I'll point out the fourth one from the top, which is the enclave at Bales Ridge, which is not too far from here, and we'd love to give anybody a tour who'd like to see it more closely. This is 268 units. We have ones, twos, and threes. We'll have a clubhouse leasing and amenities center. We like to group all of our amenities generally together. It's better for oversight and management purposes, and I think we can maintain a higher degree of quality. One of the things that sets us apart is we tend to include a number of attached garages. We find that people who are paying these kinds of rents really appreciate the ability to park in a garage and go directly into their units. We also have detached garages, which are just garages that are in separate buildings throughout the development. The buildings are two- and three-story. The roofs will be architectural shingles. We actually will put a lot more Energy Star items in than is on the list in front of you. I would point out that by hardwood surfaces, what we mean is that within the units themselves, the floors are hardwood laminate, except for the hallway and the bedrooms. In addition, as you'll see in the pictures later on, granite countertops throughout are typical. This is just a list of some of the amenities. The first one is, would be the amenities for the site overall. So we're big on outdoor kitchen grilling areas. Media rooms are very popular. We have a person who actually designs our swimming pools, and when I say resort-style, I think when you see some of the pictures, you'll agree. Typically, we'll have a coffee bar, kind of a little lounge. Lounge does not mean alcoholic beverages. It just means a place for people to gather. We will have a small kitchen in it. Within the units, as I mentioned, the wood floors, the granite countertops, individual showers are something that we found very popular as well. Another thing we do that tends to set us apart is including the washers and dryers in each unit. And we have a very expensive interior design group that actually plans these interiors. So old folks like me are not trying to say what color the carpet ought to be. And of course, a number of the kitchens have islands in them. I apologize for the, I don't know if your quality's better than what I'm looking at. I've got a lot of light on this screen. But this is a typical front elevation of a lease office. The architecture is a craftsman style. This is a mixture of stack stone and horizontal siding. This is our pool area that I bragged about. I'm real proud of these. Ours will not look like this, because everyone is unique. This is one of the outdoor kitchen grilling areas. So on the left are gas grills, on the right is the usual kitchen counter with the sink and storage and refrigeration, that type of thing. This is a shot inside that leasing center. As you can tell, I certainly didn't decorate it. This is an elevation of the building showing the garages. You can see some parts of the building are two stories, some parts are three. All of that exterior is a maintenance-free exterior. By that, what we mean is there's no painted wood, there's no aluminum, there's no vinyl siding. This is a hardy plank product that looks like wood, and of course, the stack stone. That's another shot showing a building that has a few more garages in it. This is a typical kitchen interior. The dark cabinets and the granite really set off a very nice look. This is our site plan, and I'm gonna ask our technician, is there any way to zoom in on it a little bit, or is this it?
That's my question.
Okay. Well, we'll do with it. See if I can, all right. So remember from the big site where I showed you the aerial, we do not control this hatched area. That's not within the bounds of our project. This is the hotel site, which would be just the other side of this little creekway, access directly off of the main highway. We have, this is a tentative layout, but it's fairly typical. And it's got its own detention here. Parking, recreational amenities would be in the rear. The apartments would enter off of Chestnut here. You come in, and there's a separate parking lot dedicated to the lease office. That's the pool area, amenity area, all through here. And then we have the various residential buildings scattered. They're not regimented. That's intentional. The stormwater detention for the apartments is here, closer to the stream. This area here that you might look at and say, "Well, why aren't we putting buildings in it?" The topography really doesn't allow for it. We've also are showing a secondary ingress and egress back here, onto the existing road in the sports complex. Let me bring your attention to this. Your zoning ordinance provides for so many units per one-bedroom, two-bedroom, three-bedroom unit type. We've accommodated all of that, and if I could blow it up somewhere on here, there's a legend for it. But in addition to that, there's 100 additional units that the ordinance provides for. And this area here is those 100 additional units. They're, the juxtaposition of it is so that it serves the sports complex when it's needed, and it would also serve as overflow parking for the apartment community itself. Patrick, when you and I discussed this, this is slightly different than what we discussed, but we'll adjust it to our discussion. So basically, what is, this driveway probably has to relocate about 12 feet to the north on this page, in order to accommodate the perpendicular parking on both sides, and this is roughly 100 spaces right here. We can come back to this if there are any questions. For those who are interested in the particulars, here's the 268 units, shown as one-bedrooms, two-bedrooms, and three-bedrooms. The unit sizes are net heated and cooled. The rents range, the projected rents range from $1,040 to $1,100 for a one-bedroom, $1,350 to $1,400 for a two, $1,600 for a three-bedroom. And that's our presentation. So we'd love to hear your comments, thoughts, and ideas.
Thank you, Dave.
Counsel, anyone?
Well, I'll start. At, you know, I think counsel is always like that property, or always, it's a great piece of property right there. And I know that hotels always been a, I think that's a perfect spot for a hotel. That's a great spot for a hotel. And I know I, for one, would like to see a hotel be built there, because we have our neighbors to our south already starting a hotel. So we're kind of a little bit behind the eight ball there, and, you know, it is, I think perfectly located between the park, both parks, and the ice center down the road. So I think the advantage of a hotel there is the fact that it will do business during the week, but it'll do great business on weekends, when typically hotels normally don't do as well. I'm less happy about apartments. And, you know, I know they're beautiful apartments, and I know it's your land, and you want to do with what you guys want to do with it, but I've just, over the years, you know, we've built a few apartments here in Indian Trail, and I always didn't want Indian Trail to be like other towns and have multiple apartments. I kind of like it being more of a bedroom community. I'm not saying I don't want nice things for the town. I'm just, I'm just being honest with you to say, I'm not a big fan of all the apartments that are, that are coming in there, even though I know they're beautiful, and it's a nice, very nice place. So that starts the discussion off, if anybody else wants to.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I'd like to echo the sentiments. Have you considered condominiums or townhomes in lieu of the apartments?
Mr. Morse, our business is the apartment business. We build rental apartment homes. So we do not build condominiums or detached for-sale homes. It's been our observation and experience in recent years that the multifamily homes are in significant demand, and that for communities like this, a balance of single-family and multifamily is important, because you want to attract industries, you want their employees to want to be here, and this is one of the elements of housing that a lot of people prefer, particularly people my daughter's age. She's in her mid-30s, and this is, this is what a lot of her people, her contemporaries are going to. They saw what happened in the Great Recession. They saw what happened to their friends and the parents of some of them, where they couldn't move to a better job, because they were tied to a mortgage somewhere. So we found a real demand for this, and we think there's one here as well. As the mayor said, this town doesn't have many apartments. So we think it's, that's one of the uniqueness, unique things about this location, and one of the reasons that we're very interested. I'm not interested in building a sea of apartments, or being part of a sea of apartments. We do have, in addition to what Mayor Khan said with regards to thinking it's a great hotel site, we've done some demographics, and we think the demographics also say the same thing. We've presented it to a few folks, and we are getting some preliminary interest. So we think this is a, we're looking at this as a package with respect to the city. I hope that answers some of your questions.
Pardon the interruption, Counsel. We've got about five minutes left of this presentation.
Sure. Going toward, regarding the hotel, do you have any particular hotels lined up for that parcel?
We don't line up hotels. We seek hotel developers. We are seeking a hotel developer for a Holiday Inn type. I'm not saying it would be a Holiday Inn, but something of that quality level, and of course, a national franchise. We're not interested in an independent operator on that location.
So you propose putting in the pad site for the hotel. What is the schedule, as far as the apartment build, and then the hotel, bringing the hotel to that particular piece of property?
Well, the hotel, we've already started on trying to attract that user to the site. So it would depend on when they're, when they show up, and they're ready to put up a check and participate. If, at the time, the apartments are built, and we don't have somebody ready for the hotel site, then whatever site work that we need to do over there, we would do in conjunction with the apartment construction. The apartments are probably going to take 18 to 20 months to build, 18 to 24 months, and over that period of time, they're built in a sequence such that we can lease at the same time that we're under construction.
I have a question for the hotel. What is your minimum expectations of a hotel? Are we looking at a indoor-access rooms for the hotel, or are you looking for rooms that are accessed to the outside of the hotel?
Oh, indoor.
Indoor?
Indoor, certainly.
Okay.
Yes, sir. Good question. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counsel?
When you say "site-ready" for the hotel, what do you mean by that?
I don't think that's really been defined, Mr. Head. Typically, we would, the site would be there, and we would sell it as it sits today. In discussions with Patrick, he has said the city might want to see a little bit more. One of the issues we have is that we're not the ultimate users, so I don't know exactly where they want to put their building. We've put on the site plan a concept that's a fairly typical motel concept, not motel, hotel concept, and it may be that, it may be something different. So in terms of making the site ready, maybe extending utilities to it, and some clearing, the problem with clearing now, before you build, of course, is you got to stabilize the site and control erosion, and that's always a concern. Plus, I think that, right now, the trees look a lot better than a naked site.
Speaking of trees, with the apartments, you just going to clear-cut everything, or are you going to do it in phases, as you?
We would do, we would build all 268 units at one time.
And that's 18 to 24 months, and if approved, when do you expect to start up?
Our target start date would be probably spring, late spring of 2019.
How many acres is that site?
The total site, or just the apartment site?
Total site, and then I was going to ask for the apartments, as well as the hotel site.
Okay. Let me check with my colleagues here. John?
The total site acreage is just under 28 acres.
28?
Yes.
And the apartments are?
You subtract roughly six acres for the hotel pad.
Okay. So 28 acres total, roughly six acres for the hotel pad, and then there are some environmental considerations with the stream and so forth. So probably, I'm gonna just make a wild guess, 17, 18 acres on the apartment site.
Speaking honestly, I'm not a big proponent of apartments. However, I would be more willing to see apartments there if a hotel is built in conjunction and not apartments built with a promise to bring a hotel at a later date. That's just some feedback.
You're asking me for feedback on?
No, I'm just giving you some feedback, since we're having this open dialogue.
Yeah. That would put us in a position of having to tell the landowner that we cannot start the apartment development process, which is about a 12-month process before construction starts, until the site is sold to a hotel developer who commits to start, which is a very tough burden, because the landowner probably will say no.
Well, we've got three council people here, and I'm of the same opinion. I think Councilman Cohen said it best, is that, you know, we've got, as you can, we've got somebody coming in behind you, wanting to put a pool here. We've got several different sports that are interested in coming in. You may have already heard, we've got soccer fields coming in off of 74, so.
Wonderful.
With the extreme ice, you know, we're definitely in need of a hotel. So that's, that's probably our first concern, more than the apartments.
Patrick, did you want to wrap it up?
We're good on time. I think we're good on time.
Good on time. Keep going?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any other comments?
Yes. Have you evaluated the water and sewer capacity over there?
That's the next phase of our development. We're not aware of any problems, based on discussions with our engineers, but we'll talk to the utility folks directly before we'll spend too much more money.
I'd like to know how many apartments, if we can find out. What do you, how many apartments do we have, you know, I know you don't know now, in Indian Trail? And how many do we have projected, are people coming to project to build more apartments? And, because I know we've had a couple of discussions about more people coming in and building apartments. The last thing I want to see is just getting, and I know Charlotte's building apartments like you wouldn't believe. And it might be, and it might work well for Charlotte, but we're not, we're not Charlotte. And I'm not, I'm not, I think they're beautiful. I think they're very nice, and, you know, part of it is too, is we're not seeing the total, we haven't seen how we're going to get in and out, the traffic pattern, you know. In other words, I think there's other ways that we can sell it, or you could sell it to the town, and we're just looking at a number for apartments. Does that make sense? Am I, am I making?
Typically, what we see is the community will do a comprehensive plan, and within that comprehensive plan is a mixture of uses. And that kind of defines the proportion, if you will, maybe of multifamily to single-family detached, or rental to for-sale, however you want to phrase it. And, and you try to comport with that plan. I don't know, I don't know how you à la carte say, "Well, we'll accept these two complexes, but not number three, four, and five," without that kind of study. Bless you.
Hey, bless you. Any other questions, Counsel? I'm sure that, as in the past, Counsel will write down questions and concerns, and send them to the town manager, and recommendations for them to pass on to you.
That'd be great.
Over the next several days, look for that. I think, and I concur with, with my colleagues here, with the concern. You're one of what seems to be, right now, a half a dozen developers coming in to build multifamily, and we're in the middle of reinventing Union County. The road construction's going on, on every road, which is slowly gonna conclude over the next year, with other projects beginning. You have schools that are coming out of turmoil into transition with new bonds and new buildings, that we still don't know where that's going to go, and where the projected maximum and minimums are going to be there. We have just many uncertainties going on, and it's natural that, coming out of the recession and the increase in property values, the noose that's been placed around people's necks in qualifying for a home mortgage, that the multifamily housing units become more desirable, and add the millennial factor to that, they become even more desirable. But the big concern I would have is flooding the town with all of these projects, because real estate goes in cycles. Eventually, housing booms are going to come, and there's going to be massive vacancies in multifamily where the skit's tipped towards homeownership.
I've been in this business for 45 years, and I've been through the massive vacancies and the days when we leased them all up before we even finished construction. I think a lot of that has to do with the product and the ownership and the management. We're in for the long term. You're welcome to talk to our banks, or any, you know, be glad to get you references. But it's, we're not here to build it and sell it in the first 36 months and walk away from the town. We want to be good neighbors. We want to be good citizens, and we think we can do the best job on this, this special piece of land that's at your front door than anybody else. We're interested in having a relationship with you. We are not a, we don't build 10,000 units a year and all over the country. We're pretty much in the Carolinas right now. We want it to be an asset, just like you want it to be an asset. I can, I don't, any of you ever go down to Mobile? Anybody ever been to the Eastern Shore, Grand Hotel, Fairhope, Alabama? Okay. So I've built apartments in Fairhope, Alabama. You talk about a tough place to build, and you can drive by it today, and you won't see it, because we landscaped it away. But it's there, serving the citizens of the city of Fairhope. There, Mike, you're shaking your head, so I know.
I was there for three years, back from 2001, 2004, so.
Okay. Yeah, I lived in Montrose during that time, and it's, it's a challenge, but it's a challenge we're willing to work together with the city to make it the best that it can be. If you say, "We don't want apartments there," then fine. Let us know. We'll, we'll go somewhere else, because we've got to make a living, just like anybody else. But we want to do it right.
Thank you. Patrick, did you have any last words?
No, sir. Like the mayor mentioned, we'll go ahead and put some comments back and some feedbacks.
Great.
Including the meeting minutes. I'll send them to you for your review, and you could, you could send us comments back.
Great.
Would that work?
Yes, sir. Thank you all so much for your time. This is very helpful, and thank you for loaning us, Patrick, to guide us through the considerations that we brought to you today. We appreciate it very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome. Patrick, is there follow-up here?
Yes.
I do not. What are you doing? Yeah, I'm giving you. I'd actually. I'm sure. I'm going to be.
Thank you.
I've been talking to all the people, and they keep asking about y'all. It's kind of ridiculous. I was saying.
I do not. What are you doing? Yeah, I'm giving... I'd actually... Sure. I'm gonna give you a little dance. I've been talking to all the people that keep asking about y'all. It's gonna be a good... Thank you, sir. Thank you. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Marcus.
You can also take it off and walk around. I'm gonna wear some... Do you have a little dance?
I'm karaoke tonight. Good evening, counsel. My name is Brian Smith. I'm with Urban Design Partners here representing Mecklenburg Swim Association. Just to show you a little bit about this parcel that we're looking at, which is actually right across the street from the parcel that went before us, what we are proposing on this parcel is a multi-use, multi-building facility with some, possibly some office retail in the front, and then a training facility for a private swim team. Peter Perez is with me tonight. He's the owner of Mecklenburg Swim Association. The zoning is RGB. The uses are all by right at this point, so we just wanted to come and show you what we're doing. This site plan is still preliminary, still a little bit of a work in progress, but I did want to get in front of you and just get some feedback from you. The first phase will be the swim building in the back. It's an indoor pool, seventy-five-yard pool, and then also a smaller lap pool, training pool as well. And I'll let Peter explain some of the inner workings of the pool if you have questions about that, but really don't have, I won't bore you with too much of the details, but love to get some feedback over the site plan and if you have any questions. You also have with you in that is some preliminary elevations that we are working as well. Right now, the access is off of Chestnut Parkway. We would like to work with the guys, you know, on the apartment site to make sure that the driveway's aligned. We've talked with DOT about creating a left end on our site, so we would want that to align with their proposed driveways as well. The stormwater pond is along the creek, excuse me, and love to get some feedback from you on that. I think that's it.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Is this project aligned with the other project? I mean, does the other project have to be built before this project gets built?
No, sir. No, they're totally independent. This is, I think, the second independent facility for Peter and Mecklenburg Swim. We opened another one at Ray Road and Tom Short, you know, in Union County.
About a year ago?
Year and a half ago. He also works out of several other facilities across the county, or across Mecklenburg and Union County, but they're not tied together or connected at all, other than we'll hopefully coordinate with them as far as entry points off of Chestnut.
Is Mecklenburg Swim, correct?
Yes.
Is that public, private? What is it?
It's a private facility, so we're kind of a children's competitive year-round swimming, which is real popular in Charlotte. We also do swim lessons for young children, and we have adult swimming for masters, but it's definitely not, you know, open and come-play pool. It's a training site for swim classes and competitive swimming.
So you make your, you make money then, it's kind of like a club, so you go there, it costs a membership fee and to join, and how much is a membership generally at your other clubs?
Well, it varies, because on the swim team, we have anywhere from six and seven-year-olds, you know, all the way up to eighteen and nineteen-year-olds, and then, you know, we have different practice groups depending on their interest level and how good they want to be, for lack of a better way of putting it. So, you know, six and seven-year-olds come once or twice a week, it can be anywhere from eighty to ninety dollars a month. We have eighteen-year-olds that swim nine times a week, they pay two hundred and eighty dollars a month, and they're hopefully gonna be swimming to college, and they're training a lot. In fact, I had two swim practices today, and as soon as I get out of here, I'm going home and going to bed.
Well, since I'm not, I'm not really familiar, because they didn't really have these kind of things, actually, when my kids grew up, and I don't think they did, but, so you have other ones, correct?
Yes.
And how many do you have?
Well, we built a ten-lane indoor pool at Tom Short and Ray Road that opened about a year ago, and we have about six hundred kids out of that location. We also, we have some lanes we rent space from up at the Hunter'sville Family Fitness Center, and we have a small program there. We also manage the Charlotte Christian Swimming Pool on the Charters Road, and it's a smaller location. What's the unique about this one? And I've, I think there's a couple of things. I think swimming is very popular in Charlotte. I believe this is an underserved area of Charlotte. I was born and raised in Charlotte, been here my whole life. I think this area's a little underserved and some things. And this pool, what's weird, weird is, not weird may not be the right word, is if you ever watched the Olympics, they practice and they compete in a fifty-meter pool, which is double the typical pools in the neighborhoods. So what we're trying to do here is actually build a fifty-meter pool. And I don't have enough money to make a really big one, but it's gonna be about four lanes, and it's gonna be fifty meters long, so it's gonna be a long, skinny building and give kids, not only in this local area, but from some of our other sites, the ability to train in this type of a pool, if that makes any sense at all.
Well, one of the things that made me think, if you say it's four lanes, it's gonna be strictly a training pool then. It won't be a meat pool, because you can't have meats there, because there's not enough lanes to have it.
Exactly. It is, we do meats like once a month, and we go to Raleigh and Greensboro and Downtown Aquatic Center in Charlotte, and we don't host meats. We're basically practicing here, and then we go somewhere else.
You're a training facility for swimmers, basically.
Exactly.
And...
And then if you look at, I don't know what y'all have, on the other end is a small pool that we keep warm, and we do swim lessons there. Believe it or not, we, over at Tom Short, we have a smaller pool than that, and we do five hundred kids a month in swim lessons. There are three, four, five coming in.
How big is your pool at Tom Short?
Um...
Twenty-five yards?
It's a twenty-five-yard pool, and it's ten lanes, so believe it or not, it's a little bigger than this one. This one, what we'll do is it'll be four lanes, but it's so long, in the winter, we'll have what's called a bulkhead. You put it in the middle, so you have eight lanes in the winter, and then we'll push the bulkhead to the end in the summer, and we'll have it longways in the summer. So it's about the same size, kind of, if that makes any sense at all.
Is money the only reason you don't build it wider and have meats there, or is that just something you're...
That's a big reason.
Well, or would it be something you would be interested in if you could build it wider? So you don't, you don't have meats in any of your, in any of your facilities?
We attend, in fact, we host meats, but we rent the Downtown Aquatic Center. I've just found it's, because they get pretty beat up when you run these events. You know, you have eight hundred to a thousand people coming in for three straight days. To be honest, it's just as easy to rent it downtown and run it downtown and let them clean up afterwards and do it all than have them come in your own building and...
Well, I'm just thinking of the benefit to Indian Trail. If you did have meat somewhere like that, and you brought a thousand people in here, that would be prosperous for the town.
Yeah.
And I'm just kind of thinking out loud, but...
No, I understand. I understand.
So you're somewhat in competition with Mac?
You could say that, yeah.
Yeah, and so the small pool is more like a stroke pool, so you have constant flow of water and you have people, you have...
You mean the small pool on this picture?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's more like tiny, little kids doing swim lessons, three and four and five and six-year-olds.
It's not more of a stroke, okay.
Yeah, and so they're learning to blow bubbles and, you know, hold their breath and that kind of stuff. So that side is servicing young, young children. The other side is mostly, I'd say, our kids are ten to seventeen years old.
So you don't really sponsor any teams, is that...
We are a team.
You are a team?
We are a team, and we compete.
Okay.
Yeah. In fact, believe it or not, we're the biggest team in the Carolinas as of about two months ago. We just started about six years ago, and we just, we've been fortunate that people like us, I guess.
Yeah, I've got, we have a grandson that's swimming tonight.
Right.
Downtown Charlotte, All-Stars, so...
Yeah, well, that's, you know, Charlotte with the neighborhood swimming is, like I said, I'm born and raised here, a lot of neighborhood summer league swimming, and that's our, that's our bread and butter. Those are the kids that decide, you know, "Hey, I think I may want to do this at the next level and get involved." It's a very popular sport in our city.
Sure.
It's not like this everywhere.
Okay.
But good for me, it is, I guess.
And in terms of office space, what are you looking to try to attract?
The future stuff in the front, you know...
So there's a reality here is that, so I kind of thought about this area at first, was aware of Carolina courts and how they've had some success in the same area. I mean, it's just a matter of elimination, did some demographic studies, also just know the neighborhoods around, found this piece of land, it was way more than I need, to be honest with you, and that's all, that's what they're telling me I gotta buy. So what we're probably, you know, we need probably approximately two acres of the three and a half we're purchasing. The other acre and a half, we just put this on here to show what we may do. We really don't have a plan for it. I just know I don't need it in the long run, if that makes any sense. So, you know, that's kind of what was our initial idea, to try to do something like that down the road, but there's no current plan for the front today, if that makes any sense.
Go ahead. Go ahead. There's no plans for, or you've never done anything for public, just all private?
Correct.
So you'd never even considered...
It's not really our wheelhouse, you know, it's, that's a whole different animal. I'm not even sure a public pool would, you know, you'd get into some crazy stuff with the health departments and setbacks with outdoor pools and stuff, and I'm not sure it would work on this piece of property, to be honest with you. We actually talked about possibly making this an outdoor pool with a temporary structure of it, and I don't think it would work on this piece of land. It has to be an indoor pool. And when you make a pool an indoor pool, it changes everything on the cost. It's a big deal.
How many team members approximately do you have now?
We have approximately seven hundred and eighty, well, it depends what you're, so we have children's swimming on the team, and I say children, you know, seven to eighteen years old, and then we have swim lessons for young kids, and then we actually have master swimming, which is adults.
Sure.
They get up before work and swim, so we have about seven hundred and fifty kids on the competitive team, there are about a hundred and fifty masters, and we have about six hundred kids in swim lessons. Now, that's over a couple of different locations. The bulk of them at Tom Short and Ray Road here, I would think we'd have about, I mean, we would probably max out about three hundred people on the swim team side and maybe, maybe three hundred in swim lessons, but they don't all come at the same time. It's waves, you know, coming and going on different schedules, and at the most part of time, there's probably twenty to fifty people in the building.
Do you know how many of the current members live in Indian Trail?
You know, that's, it's, I don't know the answer to that, because we will have people that are currently swimming at our other pool head this way, because it's gonna be more convenient for them. My guess, if I had to put a number on it, I bet seventy-five at least of our current members will come here instead of, so we'll start with them and hopefully generate some new interest, is the goal.
One item that we're not showing on the plan that, you know, we would like to get some feedback from you guys is the, we have had some preliminary discussions with some of the adjacent property owners about installing a driveway opposite the road, the existing drive at the, alongside the park, and then bringing in just a private driveway. And, you know, it would serve the three parcels along our western boundary, but the town owns a sliver of that right along Chestnut Parkway, so we would need an access easement from the town to create that driveway, and is that something that, you know, the town would be open to?
Can you show me on your diagram right here, so a little more clear?
So, you know, the existing drive at the park here, we were bringing it, and it's just another private road, private drive, that would serve these three parcels, and then the town owns this little sliver right along Chestnut Parkway. The first parcel and the back parcel is owned by the same owner, Doug Armstrong, I think is his name. And then this parcel is a long, skinny parcel that goes out to Matthews Indian Trail. So we've been in discussion with Mr. Armstrong as well as...
The ladies that live there, my slaves.
Yeah. They still live on the house on the front of that parcel. So very early in those discussions, it's just a secondary access point for the site, but it would require an easement from the town as well, and, you know, is that something that, you know, obviously, we would be working with Patrick on that, and we've had some discussions about that already, so... But it would create a nice four-way intersection at that, at that point.
How much property are we looking at, do you know?
How wide is the parcel from the edge of pavement or the curb and gutter to the...
I think it's ten, twenty feet, maybe?
Yeah, it's narrow.
Truly a sliver, okay.
Yes. Usually, if we own something like that, very narrow, we work with the developer, if counsel...
We can't do anything with it.
Sure.
Yeah.
We would consider it.
And it seemed like if that intersection got completed with stuff that may get there, that may make sense more than, I don't know, I thought it made sense to me, but I don't know what to do with that.
Patrick, did you have something?
Yes, I do. I just want to yield to counsel and see if they had any more questions.
Yeah, we need to be wrapping this up.
Okay. Just a couple of items. I'd like to bring to your attention probably for David and the Sterling team that later on, in about five to ten years, the on-street parking will not be there.
Yes.
The state will take that away, because they need the capacity for that four-lane boulevard all the way to Monroe. The second item is, have you discussed, have you discussed with the state the median opening, not right there at Lemon Drive, there is a median opening on Lemon Drive, but halfway maybe to the entrance of the apartment? Have we gotten a chance to discuss that with the state yet?
We swapped business cards.
We, I have had, I have discussed that with Lee Ainsworth, with DOT.
Right.
And he seemed open. I have not shown him an exact, a plan showing where that cut would be.
Okay.
But the alternative would be people making U-turns at seventy-four, so I think even he was acknowledging that that would be an adverse situation, so...
Brian, did you line your drive up or down?
I didn't have, you know, when we originally did it, I didn't have your plan, and I haven't laid the two in there to make sure, but, you know, we can, we've got a lot of frontage, so we can kind of slide it around, I think.
The last item I have is your facility in Marvin, and probably we've talked about that with Roxx, it does have a brick exterior. Is that something you're considering for these buildings right here?
I think as far, and that actually is a metal building, but it does have a brick facade.
For the first...
Yeah. And that was a requirement of the PUD, you know, within Union County. I don't think we've decided on the exact building materials as of yet, but, you know, I think we'll definitely want to dress it up.
I think we have a picture that we showed, but to be honest, it was, we were scrambling to get ready for tonight, but, you know, we, one of the things we do, we have a lot of windows, and, now, I don't know how the, I remember when we met, and I don't know if, I'm gonna bring it up, I don't know if, sorry, when we met, we talked about Carolina courts, and I guess there were some parts of that building that y'all didn't prefer anymore, but I went over there and looked at the front, where it had some stucco and some brick on the front. Does that look okay?
The preference is big brick, for it to be brick.
Right.
So, I mean, that will be exactly like the facility that you have in Marvin.
Right.
And that's something that, as the UDL comes along, we should be getting that soon, so that would be something in the UDL. I just want to bring it before you, let, you know, so that way you'll be prepared as we move forward.
There's no further discussion. We can take, we can conclude this and take five minutes before the meeting starts.
No? Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Everyone's ready?
Yes, sir.
Patrick?
Yes, sir, I am. Go ahead.
Okay. If I can have everyone's attention, please. At this time, we'd like to call the Indian Trail Town Council meeting Tuesday, June 26, 2018, to order. At this time, if anyone would please rise for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the high United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If we remain standing for a moment of silence. May be seated. For those that might be listening, just Councilwoman Howe's not here this evening. So that brings us to the agenda for additions and deletions. Counsel, any additions?
Got some?
Yes, David?
Okay, I'd like to add five B. Okay, I'd like to add 5B, I-45 Independence HOV, RS, and H. Also.
Would you mind repeating that, David?
Yes.
Oh, okay, never mind. I got it.
And 8C, Powell Bill map, and D, street acceptance, Chris Mark phases four and five.
Counsel Mccone, would you mind adding one more presentation for me?
Certainly.
From the Snowball Cabin.
Thank you, pardon.
From Snowball Cabin, what we spoke about?
That's right.
The snow, where do you want that?
This says Presentation C.
Okay. Under Presentations, the Snowball Cabin has a presentation for the town. Should I tell it, or just?
We'll let him do that.
Let you do it when the time comes.
Yeah, we'll leave that for him.
Okay. Good deal.
Okay. Any other additions or deletions at this time? If not, I'll need a motion to approve the amended agenda.
Motion to approve.
Mr. Heads made the motion to approve, all in favor. Motion carries unanimously. That brings us to item five, Presentations. Item A, New Business Recognition. We've started recognizing new businesses in towns and giving them a minute to introduce themselves and welcome them to Indian Trail. First on the list this evening is Publix. Bradley?
I'm up here.
We'll give you a minute, yep, you go up there, give you a minute to tell us what Publix is.
I don't know, I didn't know if I was doing all that, but we're very happy to be here in Indian Trail. Thank you for welcoming us, thank you for letting us be part of some of your events, and really happy to be here, very excited. The, the Wing Spot opened today in the shopping center, so all the, you can see a lot of the whole shopping centers growing and opening up, and it's gonna be, we're excited to serve you guys for the future and on. I'm Bradley, I'm in the store pretty much every day. If you need anything, definitely introduce yourself to me, and I'll help you out with whatever I can, but we're very happy to be here in Indian Trail, very excited. Just moved here myself, so I, I live in Indian Trail now also, so very excited to be here. So, thank you, guys.
Don't go yet.
Okay.
Mike?
Sure, our Parks and Recreation Department was in the neighborhood to make it here tonight, but they did want to extend a gratitude for Publix's role in serving as a sponsor for our Family Fun Day, which you guys helped make a great event for thousands of our residents. So thank you very much for that.
Yeah, that was awesome. We got to stay out there for, I was out there for about eight hours myself, and that typhoon that came through was pretty awesome, but it was nice to see as we were leaving, everyone coming back in for the fireworks. It seemed like it was a great event, so it was great on our part, too, so.
Thank you.
Yep.
I wanted to thank you, too, that's all right, Mayor, for the golf, are you, are you?
I'm gonna be there on Saturday.
Would you do me a favor before we leave, is, give me the four players, or did you turn that in with the?
I'll get Jeremy Day, he should have emailed it already. That's our guy, I got their names, but I think you already have communicated their names, but we'll be there.
I didn't get it, but, but if they've got it, then we'll have it.
I'll reach out, make sure we do.
And listen, thank you very much.
Yeah, no problem, dude.
Look forward to seeing you Saturday.
Yeah, I'm excited. We'll be wearing our public screen, so it's good.
There you go.
Bradley?
Yeah.
On behalf of the town and the council, we'd like to welcome you to Indian Trail.
I will present you with that.
Our next business is Painting with a Twist.
Well, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for welcoming Painting with a Twist to the Indian Trail community. My name is Eddie, and this is my partner, Amanda. Our studio is located in the Sun Valley Common Center, right next to Viva Chicken, the famous Viva Chicken. We're very excited to be here, you know, in this great town. When we first looked at Indian Trail, we, we knew this is where we wanted to be. The people, the community, the atmosphere, all seem to fit our personality. For those of you who don't know what we do, we're all about fun art, not fine art. We make it very easy to come and enjoy yourselves, you know, just have to go visit our website, check out our calendar, choose your favorite painting, and then go come up and have fun. Of course, we're a bring your own, so you can bring your own favorite drinks and snacks and things like that, and just be ready to have fun and party. We offer many different types of events, such as Family Days, Paint Your Pet, which is one of our more populars. We're offering a kid, a kids camp next month, in July, middle, about the end of July, and then we have our regular classes. One of our favorite events is, that we do every month, is Painting with a Purpose. That's where we have the opportunity to give back to the community by partnering with local nonprofit organizations. We hope to be able to set those up with groups in the very near future. We also have a private party room for birthday parties, bachelorette parties, and other special occasions. And again, thank you, thank you for inviting us, and we look forward to painting with you.
Also, Mr. Cone, Painting with a Twist has given, was very generous to give a silent auction item for the golf tournament, considering they just opened and we're scrambling around, and we appreciate that. Also.
What are your hours?
Most of our, our events right now are running Wednesday through Sunday. We have classes during the day, most of those days, as well as in the evening. Our office hours where we're there is like 11 to 5, from Wednesday to Sunday also. We're there to help people, show them around, things like that, but our classes are mostly 12 to 2, 2 to 4, things like that in the afternoon, and then our evening classes usually run 7 to 9. The evening classes tend to be more for adults, and the daytime classes tend to be more for the kids, things like that.
Well, welcome. We have a plaque for you also. Brings us to our next presentation, which is Move, Pack, Clean. Are we here tonight? Okay, well, we can, yeah, we can push it to the next meeting. Okay. That brings us to item B that Mr. Cone added, which I can't read, because it's highlighted.
I'm assuming that Mr. Sadik's gonna take over that. Are you gonna take over that?
Which one, David?
The I-45 Independent.
Yes, we do have.
Because I don't know anything about it, so thank you.
Thank you, David. We do have a couple of representatives. We have Warren with North Carolina DOT. Warren's usually deal with HOVs, and we also have his consultant, RSNH, with us here tonight, too. So, Warren, have at it.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Members of councils, town staff, interested observers, Publix. I'd like that on you, Painting with a Twist, yes. Thank you again. I am Warren Cooksey, and need to modify my bio a bit, since I last spoke with you in your old digs, great upgrade, by the way. I have shifted over to be with the North Carolina Turnpike Authority, the agency, a business unit of the North Carolina Department of Transportation that's focused on any project involving tolls. And as Patrick mentioned, I'm joined by Radha Swayam Pagala and Nick Landa with RSNH, who are our consultants on this outreach effort. What brings me here specifically to you today, tonight, is that because express lanes are still a new concept, and they're under development, getting ever closer to being implemented, the Charlotte Regional Transportation Planning Organization had asked the Turnpike Authority, and then we certainly agreed, that a much greater level of outreach would be needed for these projects than is standard for NC DOT projects. So we've been moving throughout the corridor, speaking with local governments at their town board meetings, in preparation for public meetings later this summer of the more usual type, to talk about these upcoming projects for this express lanes network. So our, our purpose for this, to rush through it a bit, is to provide an introduction for some, and for others, a reminder of the concept of express lanes, focus in on the 45 and US 74 projects, and in this case, US 74 means basically Independence Boulevard and Matthews in Charlotte, and then take questions to, you know, fill in the gaps that we didn't cover in the presentation. Always good to start with exactly what express lanes are, as you see there, illustrated and with a sentence, "Separate lanes in a highway corridor in which drivers can choose to pay a variable toll for a more reliable travel time." Several key concepts baked into that sentence, separate lanes, you see that in the illustration. This, for example, would be the future of 45, kind of west of Ray Road, between Ray and 77. Three non-toll general-purpose lanes are there today, they will be there for as long as the road's there. What we're talking about with this project is adding one variably-told express lane, and we'll talk about variable tolling through the course of this presentation as well. Reliable travel time, that third major concept that we'll talk throughout. So these are our themes, separate lanes, variable toll, more reliable travel time. New idea to North Carolina, new idea to the Indian Trail region, not a new idea nationwide. 19 metropolitan areas across the country with about 40 of these types of projects in operation. Nationwide, there are another roughly 40 express lane projects, either in development or under construction. This is more and more the common way to add highway capacity in growing urban areas. The network we're specifically talking about for this presentation, again, US 74 and 45 consists of three separate projects. The first, known as US 74 Phase 1, or it wouldn't be government without an acronym and a number, State Transportation Improvement Program, number U-5526A, nobody else ever has to remember that. This project will get things started in the area by converting the existing bus lane to a variably-told express lane. We'll talk about more on the details of each project a little later. But the second, to put it into context, the 45 Project, State Transportation Improvement Program, number I-5507, adds one express lane in each direction on 45 between US 74 and I-77. And then finally, we come back to Independence Boulevard for US 74 Phase 2, ID number U-2509. That adds an express lane and a general-purpose lane, so one-told lane, one non-told lane in each direction, making US 74 have a uniform section of general-purpose lanes and express lanes, all the way between 45 and uptown Charlotte. Cannot emphasize enough, there are no tolls being added to general-purpose lanes. The only lanes getting the toll will be those labeled express lanes. How we got here, as a history major, I love this slide, but it's way too text-heavy for our presentations, but this, these studies go back to 2007. Charlotte DOT paired with an alphabet soup of other government agencies, including NC DOT, the local planning organization, what was called the Fast Lane Study. By Phase 3, it was very clear that I-45 and US 74 were excellent candidates for express lanes. So during the course of 2013, we had some initial work on 45. By 2014, these projects had been included in the Charlotte Regional Transportation Planning Organization's Metropolitan Transportation Plan, and they had been funded in the state's State Transportation Improvement Program. That kicked off preliminary design work, environmental studies, always crucial for these sorts of projects. We had a round of public meetings for the projects nearly three years ago now. It's been 2015 since we last went to the public, at the beginning of the environmental study process. Now we're coming to the end of it, and again, the outreach continues. In the meantime, the Turnpike Authority, as the ultimate owner, operator, and maintainer of these lanes, has been doing its financial analysis, comparing the likely revenue from future tolls to the cost of operations, the cost of maintenance for those lanes. Lots of history summed up in one slide. The question of why express lanes can be summed up in three simple PowerPoint points. This is a growing region, a region that is growing faster than average. It's something we all know, we've all experienced it, it's not news to anybody in this room, but it's the basis for our conversation today, because with all this growth, we need cost-effective, long-term transportation alternatives. We have a lot of people coming, a lot of people already here, nobody brought asphalt with them, and we have limited resources with which to buy new asphalt. So, cost-effective and long-term alternatives. We'll explore that theme again shortly. But lastly, I'll go back to that statement from the description of express lanes. More and more folks have become aware of the need for reliable travel times, that as the area grows, and people choose to drive at different times of day, their experience driving varies dramatically depending on the time of day. Their travel times are not reliable. We'll see a real-world example of that momentarily. Continuing on the theme of why express lanes, let's look at a real-world example for this area, I-45, which, as you may recall, had some general-purpose lanes added back in the late, in late 2014. One in each direction between Ray Road and I-77, making the full count six, three in each direction, up from four. Well, NC DOT keeps traffic counts in between interchanges, and so if we kind of look at the middle of that project, between Pineville Matthews Road and Johnston Road, look at our average number of vehicles per day, you can see that going back all the way to 2006, looking at it biennially, fairly consistent cars per day, even though we know the area has been growing, going back to 2006. You see a little dip there in 2010, likely due to the recession, but fairly consistent numbers over the course of, you know, from 2006 to 2014. Open up a brand-new lane in each direction, however, and what we see is, within just two years, a 33% increase in traffic volume. Now that section's carrying 121,000 cars a day. That is much faster than anyone predicted. You go back to the environmental document for this project, it did not predict numbers like that, within just two years of the lanes opening. So we need something more cost-effective, more long-term, than a general-purpose lane strategy, as this real-world example shows. Travel time reliability. Let's go from NC DOT data to our friends at Google Maps. You go to Google Maps, and you tell Google that you want during a non-rush hour period to make westbound travel on 45, and just focus on the project corridor that we're talking about here, 74 to 77. If you tell Google that you want to get to 77 by 6:00 in the morning, it'll tell you, on any typical weekday morning, make sure you're on 45 at 74 by 5:45. It'll take you about 12 to 16 minutes. It's signed at 70 miles per hour, after all, you got about a four-minute variation in travel time on average, but you can, you can pretty much rely on that trip if you want to get there at 6:00. If you want to get there a couple hours later, however, you tell Google, no, I'm traveling at rush hour, want to get there at 8:00, it'll tell you, you better leave at 7:15. That trip is going to take anywhere from 26 to 45 minutes, 19-minute variation. There is no reliable travel time on 45 at that time of day. That's, that's what we're struggling with. And note in particular, the red zone on the westbound travel and rush hour shouldn't surprise anybody, but look at that orange zone already. That's between Johnston Road and Pineville Matthews Road. Where it is, six general-purpose lanes wide, three in, in the inner loop direction, and already, you know, four years later, we're seeing these slowdowns in that segment at rush hours. Wrapping up why express lanes, the same holds true on the eastbound travel. Everybody understands that one, I don't need to go through the details of it, but you're looking at the same sorts of variety in travel time when it comes to outer-loop travel in the afternoon peak. So express lanes work with a variable toll. Congestion, in a nutshell, is when the volume of demand exceeds the capacity of a lane, but if you put a price on that access, you can regulate the demand and the supply, so that a lane doesn't get congested. A properly functioning, variably-told express lane does not experience congestion, because the toll keeps the traffic flowing. Drivers know that price before choosing. So if a driver needs that reliable travel time at that particular time of day, there's an appointment to get to, a child to pick up from daycare, a flight to catch, whatever reason a person has for needing to cut through the traffic that we know exists everywhere at certain times of day, you can make that decision based on seeing what the price is, and that price will buy you the reliable travel time. Tolls are collected at highway speeds, there are no toll booths, it would hardly be reliable travel time if we made people stop, so we don't. We have overhead gantries, we will read a transponder. In North Carolina, the transponder is called NC Quick Pass, mounts on your windshield, just by your rearview mirror, and the Quick Pass transponder gives you a discounted toll rate. It's not required to travel in the lane, however, we'll have cameras on there that will take photos of your license plates, and we'll send a bill by mail to folks who use the lane who don't have a transponder. That will, however, cost a little bit more because of the cost of billing by mail. That's express lanes in general. Turning to 45 in particular, this has been a, a big project with a lot of attention. So again, a reminder that it's one express lane in each direction, about a 17-mile length between 74 and 77. This project, in order to help with the operation of the express lane, also extends that general-purpose lane that was built back in, opened in 2014, from Ray to Providence. We have some weaving issues with access into the express lane that extending that general-purpose lane will help for a bit. As I mentioned at the beginning, we are aiming towards the last round of public meetings, big, standard public meetings for this project, and in conjunction with that, RSNH has helped the Turnpike Authority with a video explaining express lanes in general, and the 45 project in particular, that we will have a formal unveiling of at the public meeting, but y'all will get a sneak preview. And here it goes.
Charlotte is a very vibrant city.
Charlotte's a great place.
There's a great sense of community everywhere you go.
We got the culture, we got arts.
Food here is fantastic.
There's athletics, you got professional, you got amateur. There's a lot of things to do there in Charlotte. We just need our transportation system to keep up.
Just the sheer population growth is just really affecting everybody's commutes.
I waste a lot of time sitting in traffic.
On some days, it's doubled, the amount of time it takes me to get to work.
Sometimes, sitting on 45 can take up to two hours.
I've seen traffic backed up seven, eight miles.
There's gotta be a better way.
There is, the I-485 Express Lanes Project.
The population of Mecklenburg County is just over one million residents today. That's more than double the number of people living here over twenty-five years ago. We are one of the fastest-growing areas in the country. We are expected to grow more than fifty percent over the next twenty-five years.
Charlotte is growing rapidly, and our traditional transportation revenue streams simply cannot keep pace with that growth.
It is apparent that we don't have the financial resources to keep building roads as we have in the past. We need to look for more efficient solutions to increase the throughput on our roads.
Work on the Fast Lane Study began in 2007 to take a look at options for improving roadways without necessarily adding general purpose lanes. The recommendation from the study was to look at a system of express lanes in the region.
The I-485 Express Lanes Project ties into a network of express lanes by adding one express lane in each direction for a total of seventeen miles in southern Mecklenburg County, from I-77 to US-74. A completed system of express lanes will provide Charlotte travelers a more reliable travel time on these busy highways.
Express lanes are limited-access lanes typically in the middle of non-toll highways. Express lanes have been implemented in cities across the country, particularly those communities really struggling with congestion. Express lanes offer drivers more reliable travel time by maintaining more constant speeds in designated lanes.
Currently, there are segments of I-485 that carry one hundred and forty thousand vehicles per day, so congestion is experienced frequently. By 2045, there could be as many as one hundred and seventy thousand vehicles on I-485, so the congestion is going to get worse, be compounded over time. It's not going to get better.
We know from actual experience that general purpose lanes by themselves do not provide a reliable travel time.
Widening I-485 with more general purpose lanes is not a sustainable, long-term solution. As soon as those lanes open, they'll pull up with more traffic, causing unreliable travel conditions. We need to look at alternative options.
To provide a more reliable travel time on this segment of I-485, one express lane will be added in each direction from I-77 to US-74.
The number of free general purpose lanes will remain the same, plus the project will add a general purpose lane extension from Ray Road to Providence Road.
The express lanes on I-45 will give drivers the option to maintain a minimum speed of forty-five miles per hour, even during rush hour.
Express lanes benefit everyone, not just those that are using the express lanes. Because when they're operating efficiently, they can remove fifteen hundred or more vehicles per hour from the general purpose lanes.
The express lanes will be separated from the general purpose lanes by a two-foot or four-foot delineation. Access points will be clearly marked throughout the corridor to either enter into or exit out of the express lanes.
Drivers will not have to stop or slow down to enter the express lanes. The system is completely automated and functions at highway speeds.
An electronic tolling system collects the tolls through a mounted transponder in your car, or through a video capture of your license plate for those that don't have a transponder.
The toll rate will fluctuate based on a number of factors, including congestion and travel speeds in each lane. Drivers will see the current toll rate on highly visible signage. Express lanes offer drivers a cost-effective transportation option should they choose to use them.
In addition to access points, the project has direct connectors, which are exit and entrance ramps directly connecting the express lanes and local streets.
The I-485 Project has direct connectors at Johnston Road and Westinghouse Boulevard. The Johnston Road Direct Connector provides a ramp for motorists traveling northbound on Johnston Road to access the westbound I-45 express lanes. These ramp connections are in addition to the recently constructed flyover bridge at Likewise, this connection provides an off-ramp for motorists traveling in the I-485 eastbound express lanes who want to access Johnston Road going southbound.
The Westinghouse Boulevard Direct Connector provides a ramp for motorists traveling on Westinghouse Boulevard to access the eastbound direction on I-45 express lanes.
Likewise, this connection provides an off-ramp for motorists traveling in the westbound I-485 express lanes who want to exit onto Westinghouse Boulevard.
The I-485 Express Lanes Project is part of the greater network of express lanes proposed for the region.
Express lanes address the travel needs of motorists by providing a cost-effective transportation choice.
It's going to benefit our residents and provide an option to get somewhere faster and more reliably. For instance, to work, to a doctor's appointment, or to take their children somewhere.
These are good options for people who are not just commuting, but also for businesses.
Express lanes encourage economic development by providing a reliable, congestion-free alternative for businesses.
The express lanes will be owned, operated, and maintained by the North Carolina Turnpike Authority, a business unit of the North Carolina Department of Transportation. They will give drivers more travel choices that are cost-effective and reliable, both now and into the future.
There have been a number of stakeholder meetings in the past to encourage the public to participate in this process. These continue, and we encourage members of the public who are interested to attend
It is my firm hope that once we have that video posted on YouTube, it goes viral, which I am defining as more people watch it on YouTube than attend the public meeting. So I think it can, I think I can pull that up. To close out, discussion of the 45 contract and the full project scope, we realized that there are funded projects that also have components that interact with the interstate corridor, so we're rolling those into this project to minimize the impact on I-45 travelers. So for example, in addition to constructing the express lane, the contract for this project will also take the John Street interchange work that's part of the Old Monroe Road East-John Street widening project that y'all may have heard of, and, and do that work with this contract rather than that one in a, in a few years. In addition, the Weddington Road interchange, which has long been on the books for construction, is a fully funded project. We're rolling that funding into this contract to get that general purpose lane interchange constructed with the express lanes as well. And finally, in the mid-2020s, there's funding to widen Ballantyne Commons Parkway between Providence Road and Ray Road. This project will do the bridge work to get the Ballantyne Commons Parkway Bridge over 45 widened to four lanes ahead of that project, so that when that widening comes along, we don't have to interrupt Interstate 45 traffic to do that part of it. That's 45, that will be the focus, again, of some bigger public meetings later this year. We're trying to make as many people as possible aware of it. For 74 Phase One, this is a somewhat simpler project. As you see, this is kind of Independence Boulevard today, heading towards Uptown Charlotte. The Hawthorne Lane Bridge may not be there today, but it is being rebuilt. And what Phase One will do, as I mentioned earlier, is convert that bus lane that's been down the middle of Independence Boulevard for about twenty years now to a variably-told express lane. It's about a six-mile length from 277 out to Wallace Lane, and because of some space constraints, this project will have a reversible lane. I'll talk more about that during the section. So this is reversible between Albemarle Road and 277. Past Albemarle Road, however, to Wallace Lane, and you see this today as you travel, there is one lane in each direction, so we'll, we'll put the express lane traffic on it. In terms of accessing this Phase One, there will be a direct connector at Albemarle Road, so east Charlotte and Mint Hill travelers will be able to get into and out of the express lane directly at Albemarle Road. Other travelers coming from, for example, Indian Trail will have an entry point at Wallace Lane in the morning, exiting towards 77, 277 rather. And then in the afternoon, the lane reverses, and you can get into it from 277 and exit at Wallace Lane. I mentioned the, the space, if we're going to be putting cars in this lane, which of course is the point, we need to have room for them to break down in case that happens. And so while currently that, that bus lane is striped two-way, we're going to need to do it, make it reversible so there's room for a shoulder. We have some limitations on widening Independence Boulevard in this particular segment, particularly around Hawthorne Lane Bridge, so this part is a reverse, this is what drives this as being a reversible lane. That said, from Albemarle Road to Wallace Lane, we've got the two lanes in each direction, of course, for Phase One, only one will be used at any given time, the inbound lane in the morning, the outbound lane in the afternoon. But keep that in mind for Phase Two, probably the most complex of the three projects I'm presenting to you today. This is the grand completion project that makes US-74 look very similar all the way from 45 to 277. This project, as I mentioned earlier, adds a toll express lane and a general purpose lane from Wallace Lane out to 45, thus making the entire corridor three general purpose lanes and a toll express lane in each direction, or all the way up through. This project will also eliminate all traffic signals, will build interchanges or overpasses, so there'll be no more at-grade intersections on US-74 from 45 all the way to Uptown. And it will also make several parallel road connections in the town of Matthews and some in Charlotte, but particularly the northeast Parkway and Independence Point Parkway in Matthews, which the town set aside and started constructing decades ago in preparation for this very project. They've been very patient, this project will complete that. In terms of access, we've talked about direct connectors with 45 and with Phase One, there'll be three for Phase Two. There'll be a direct connection with the 45 express lanes, a direct connection into the variable toll express lane at Sardis Road, and also one at Conference Drive. For access directly from 74 to kind of weave in, weave out, there will be a point at the southeastern terminus there, at the county line, one at Sam Newell Road where people can get into the lane, and then also up by Sharon Amity Road in the section of Phase One. And it's that portion of Phase Two that will allow this segment of the express lanes from Albemarle Road to 45 to have two-way operation in the future if there's a market for that. Here's how the section looks. Again, you see the three general purpose lanes, you see some of the right-in, right-out auxiliary lanes out to the, the far ends, and down the middle, you've got the one express lane in each direction for variably-told access. Do note, and for this section also points out, that this project will close some existing right-in, right-out points on US-74, but it will maintain others, so it's not creating a highway. It's just reducing some of the access that exists currently. To date, for both projects, 45 and US-74 Phases One and Two, we've had multiple stakeholder meetings, small group meetings such as this one. We had, as I mentioned, the two public meetings back in 2015 at the start of the environmental study process. We are looking to have others this summer. And to, to take you to that schedule, five major tasks to perform, public meetings, complete those studies, design work, start construction, open to traffic. For Phase One of US-74, we are working on scheduling and locating those this summer, so that we can complete the environmental studies this summer, get those final designs absolutely complete, let the contract this summer. And because the asphalt's already there and it's, the construction work relatively speaking is fairly minimal, we anticipate these can be opened to traffic in the fall of 2019. 45, another round of public meetings, working on scheduling and locating those for this summer. Once we do those, we can get the environmental studies complete, get those final design work done, but because this will be a design-build contract, there will be design work that still occurs after the contract is let, so we don't anticipate seeing construction begin until the summer of 2019, which would allow, we, we anticipate, traffic to be on the new lanes by 2022. And then, a lot of work still to be done on Phase Two. We'll talk about that project some with the Phase One summer public meetings, but we will have a separate set of public meetings for Phase Two for its environmental study work. That will lead to some final design work, and then because of the complexity of that corridor, if you think just for a few moments about what it will take for utility relocation and right-of-way acquisition, we're going with to be determined for now on starting construction and open to traffic, but we'll get greater clarity on those years by, we anticipate, next year. Multiple ways to contact us, the projects have toll-free, a toll-free hotline. My email, of course, is available and public for anyone with questions. And the NC Turnpike Authority does have a Twitter account, @ncturnpike. It really could use more followers, so please, if you're on Twitter, follow NC Turnpike. Mayor, Council, any questions?
Any questions, Council?
No?
Then we answered them all. I thank you kindly. In conclusion, I will note, there is another Turnpike Authority project with which you're very, very familiar and interested, the Monroe Expressway, I did not address here. As I've told you in the past, or as I've told this Council in the past, our anticipated opening date, the word we're getting from the contractor is November 27th. The experts and our own experience with the Turnpike project in Wake and Durham County shows that it's in the ninety months, ninety days before opening, that's the crucial time to really do public outreach about the mechanics of tolling. So I'm going to request to be back before you this, this fall, September, October, that timeframe, to take you through a brief but informative lesson on these specifics of tolling, and especially how the bill-by-mail process works. Because we learned from experience that if we don't do a better job of educating people about what bill-by-mail is all like, it gets a lot crunchier when those bills go out. So we're, we're creating an educational component specifically targeted, focused for elected officials, so that you will know how that works before the expressway opens. Thank you very much for your time. I look forward to be back before you with the details about things like, like what this gizmo here can do for everybody. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, that brings us to the Snowball Cabin.
Well, I've, I've a pretty simple presentation going on here. We, my wife and I own the Snowball Cabin. If any of you haven't been there, we're right around the corner here. Make the best shaved ice. This is not me saying this, this is what I'm hearing anyway, in, in the free world, I believe is the way they put it. But we wanted to get involved with Memorial, Veterans Memorial that's being built here. And so the mayor came out on June the 3rd, and we had a, had a big, big day there, and gave a percentage of the proceeds, wanted to give it to you guys for that memorial. And actually, some folks came up and bought their snowball and, you know, contributed a little bit more just on the, on the purpose of the thing. And so we have a check here for you, and ended up being three hundred dollars for six hours of snowball sales, so that's pretty good. Wanted to give this to whoever wants it. And wanted to say a word, we really appreciate all that's, there you go. It was either three hundred or thirty thousand, I can't remember which one. I think it was three hundred. But we, I really appreciate the, the response to our new location has been phenomenal. And, you know, if you get a chance, go online, we, we've got a video out, we just had a video produced about the Snowball Cabin, it's just a couple of minutes, it's on Facebook and Instagram, and kind of gives you an overview of what we're doing there and what we're trying to achieve, which, bottom line, is a place where a family can go out for literally eight dollars, a family of four, eight or ten dollars, and spend a couple hours being together and not, you know, going broke trying to do it. And if any of you've been there, you've probably seen that. So it's, it's turned out really good, and I'm very thankful and, and appreciate you, appreciate you being up here. Anyway, wanted to present that to you guys, and maybe we can do another one in the future. So, thank y'all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, I'm going to open a public comments. Thank you for your interest in participating in the public comments portion of today's regular meeting of the Indian Trail Town Council. Please be aware that these meetings are recorded and can be heard by anyone through the internet. Comments are limited to three minutes per speaker. You may not give your three minutes to another speaker to increase the person's allotted time. Comments are to be directed at the entire council as a whole and not individuals. Citizens will be expected to be civil in their language and presentation and act within reasonable standards of courtesy. We ask the audience, as well as the speakers, to maintain order and decorum in your conduct throughout the public comment period. That being said, you may not engage in slander, name-calling, personal attacks, or threatening or otherwise aggressive speech or behavior that I or Council reasonably believe will... or otherwise aggressive speech or behavior that I or council reasonably believe will immediately result in a disruption of the meeting. Finally, we ask you a simple favor. If you have a grievance, concern, or complaint related to a specific town employee, we respectfully request that prior to airing your grievance here during public comments, you first contact the town manager, the town attorney, or one of our council with your concern. We respect your right to be heard, and we ask that you respect our town's employees' right to be fair, to a fair hearing on your grievance. At this time, first public speaker, Ms. Fielding. Once you state your name, the time will begin.
Meg Fielding, 1011 Council Fire Circle, Indian Trail. My husband and I attended a meeting for the State Transportation Improvement Program, STIP, on Tuesday, June 19th in Albemarle. They're working on a 10-year schedule for projects for NC DOT that is updated every two years using a data-driven process called prioritization, as well as financial information and status of pre-construction activities, the current cycle to update the STIP for the years 2020 to 2029. On April 3rd of this year, NC DOT released the data scores for more than 2,100 highway, aviation, bicycle, pedestrian, transit, rail, and ferry projects evaluated for the 2020 to 2029 STIP. All of these projects were on view at this meeting on an interactive map and are available at the following website, which is nc.gov/strategictransportationinvestments/2020-2029. It was a very interesting meeting. There's a 30-day public comment period from June 4th through July 9th. During that time, NC DOT's 14 divisions will receive public comment on how they plan to rank regional and division projects. This ranking involves assigning local input points in accordance with each division's established methodology as required by law. NC DOT wants to hear from community members about transportation projects that they think should be top priorities in the 2020 to 2029 State Transportation Improvement Program. The public can provide feedback in person, in writing, or online. You can complete a short interactive survey to identify the priority projects that you feel are most important, or submit comments via email, mail, or phone using the associated contact information listed on that website that I just referenced. And please note that the comment period is not for maintenance-related projects, such as patching potholes, resurfacing, or ditches. NC DOT uses a different method to prioritize maintenance projects. We're fairly new residents in this area, and we attended the meeting up in Albemarle because we wanted to get more of an overview of what's happening in the future as far as streets. Sorry to do more street talk to you guys on top of the meeting we just had. But the people that we spoke to there were concerned because they really haven't gotten very much public feedback. So I volunteered to bring this information to council, and the clerk has a copy of everything that I just read, so that maybe we can encourage people to go on the website and check that out. Also, regarding the change in the traffic pattern on Independence Road 74, I have a contact number for the resident engineer in Monroe for feedback and public comments, which is 704-218-5125. Thank you.
Thank you. Liz?
Hi, I'm Aliz Benavides, I live at 4,005 Magna Lane in Indian Trail. Couple of things I want to address with the council, but one of them I'm going to be leaving until the next council meeting, because I'm waiting for some things, I'm not totally prepared, that I want to present to council and to Union County Sheriff. But we'll get there, I just didn't want you to think I'd forgotten of it yet. The other reason I'm here tonight is a great concern. Directly behind my home in Taylor Glen, there is a construction site where they're building, you know, new homes, and I don't even remember the name of whatever's going on. I spoke here late last year, I was hospitalized with a very bad asthma attack. My pulmonologist believes it could be related to all the blasting and things going on on the construction site. I have another concern. A few days, well, it's been going on, where my neighbors and I have been coming outside and feel like we've been in the middle of a sandstorm. It has been documented with pictures, with video, what we're having to endure. Our health is in jeopardy, our neighbors, our children, our pets, all of it. I do have on my phone comments from the neighbors in Taylor Glen on our Facebook page. Just last week, I ended up at doctor's, very, very sick, coughing and choking. They run test, they tested me for strep, for flu, for mono, and everything came back negative. I also was having a lot of pain in my right hip that started the night before, so my doctor sent me to the ER. It was diagnosed that I have torn the muscle inside my hip socket, and today I met with my surgeon as a follow-up. I've had no accidents, no falls, no bumps, nothing. When I asked him at the hospital, how could I possibly have done this? And they said, judging by the excessive coughing, that could be what the problem was. They also showed me today, and I have the pictures, if anybody cares to see them, where the tear is, where it has been bleeding from the tear, and it's also affected the sciatic nerve that is swollen. We believe it may have come from all the dust that we're having to ingest in the area. On Saturday, I'm really appreciative of town council, in particular Councilman Morse. When I called him on Saturday, he was on-site to inspect within 15 minutes. Our HOA president also joined us, where he relayed how he'd driven up our street and couldn't believe just how bad everything was. Our cars, our homes are just disastrous inside of our homes, and my concern is our health is in jeopardy due to them not paying due diligence to what they need to be doing.
10 seconds.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. That brings us to the law enforcement update. Captain Cobble.
Good evening. Sit back and relax, I've got about an hour and a half. I'm going to go through real quick, and I'm really just going to honestly just going to read this, so I can try to cover it and everybody can listen to, and then answering questions that you've got and related to any of these. So just real quick, Detective Kimball has charged Brittany Morris with a prescription fraud, started out at the Public Pharmacy, and wound up being a couple of other CVSs, including one at the Sun Valley. But this Ms. Morse was calling around trying to get, act like she was from the Indian Trail Family Physicians, and get prescriptions for her boyfriend. And so Detective Kimball was able to put together several cases on her and got her charged and arrested. Detective Burrows has charged Dallas Walters with a breaking and entering and larceny after breaking and entering. We had three other individuals that were with him that they're still working to identify that broke into a home here in Indian Trail and stole several things, including a vehicle from garage. We've had a cluster, about daily clusters of car break-ins, as usual, around town. School's let out now, so a lot more people are out wandering around in the streets, but we can't say it enough, over and over and over again, but remove your valuables from your car, take the time to lock the doors. If you've got motion lights outside, you know, make sure that the bulbs are good in them. If you don't have motion lights outside, put some motion lights outside and then make sure the bulbs are good in them. But it's very helpful whenever folks have installed security cameras around their houses. We're getting a lot of those that come in and say, hey, we heard, you know, something went on down the street. We've got security cameras, those are, you know, becoming more and more popular throughout the neighborhoods, very helpful for us. The folks that's got them on their doorbells, the camera systems and stuff have become very helpful. Technology's just super clear on that. So a few weeks ago, we had several business break-ins that happened on May 21st around town, and Corey Burrows, one of our detectives, has been working with Monroe PD and Charlotte Mecklenburg Police Department on that series of restaurant break-ins that took place that night, that spanned everywhere from Charlotte all the way down to Monroe. And you've got here a couple of the charges that have been so far taken out on those, Demetrius Wilson and Colin Gallman, I hope I pronounced that wrong because it came to town, broke into stuff. Both of them's been charged with four counts of breaking and entering, four counts of felony conspiracy, and four counts of injury to property, two counts of larceny after breaking and entering. And those were for the Jack's Pizza, Little Caesar's Pizza, China Two, and the Subway. Monroe Police Department's also taken out charges on the same individuals, and there's still two other individuals in that spree that they're trying to get identified. So we had a break-in that was reported at Secure Storage, which is Unionville Indian Trail Road, right where Yonkers Road comes out at, right across from Little Caesar's, happened on the 6th of June, was reported that day. Got there along with our crime scene folks, and I stopped by and checked in, and we quickly developed a suspect. Detective Yang jumped on that case, was able to go to Charlotte, conduct an interview, later got a confession from a gentleman who had previously worked there for that break-in, so got good charges on him. On the 14th, which was a Thursday at 2:19 in the afternoon, Carolina Courts was holding a event over here, and a gentleman, 21-year-old Deshaun Bailey of Charlotte, went inside and stroked up a conversation with the clerk, started asking about how much it costs to get in, can I get in for free? I know somebody that's refereeing over on Court Number One, back and forth, and then went away for a little bit, came up, started talking again. When the clerk was distracted, Mr. Bailey grabbed the money box that apparently they thought was a good idea to leave on the counter for you to drop your money in when you came in, and took off with that, a little over $500 and some odd dollars in there. Jumped into a BMW car that was waiting over here on Chestnut Parkway, the car was being driven by another 21-year-old, Austin Bruton of Charlotte, and they took off toward, back towards Charlotte. And thanks to good old Union County Indian Trail Stallings Construction, Mike Lambert was sitting over here in the park when it came out. And so usually, there's a little bit of delay because somebody coming out of a business, you know, like Carolina Courts, a young man running out and hopping into a car is usually not anything that's going to catch your attention from our aspect. If you run out of 7-Eleven, you know, 11 o'clock at night with a hood on, that's going to catch my attention. But running out of the ball court over here with a backpack or a box and, you know, hopping in, that's not a big deal, especially when they're crowded. So Lambert was able to catch up with them up here on the congested Matthews Indian Trail Road at Stallings Road. They had turned toward 74 and apparently did not realize they turned toward the end of everything because traffic was at a standstill. So with the assistance of Stallings, they were able to get those two yahoos and brought them down to the jail and got the money back over to Carolina Courts, so that worked, that'd be a pretty good one. The 26th, at 3:10 this morning, Rossini's Restaurant over here behind the Chick-fil-A had alarm go off, guys got there, had a busted window on it. Nearby business had an employee there that was starting to cook some food, said that they'd seen a car pull up, a couple of guys get out, thought they might be working there, didn't know, he didn't call it in, and then the alarm sounded. So we got a little bit of a vehicle description, they were working on getting some camera footage this morning, and that's about all. We do hope that, I know, I think Patrick's going to attend tomorrow, I don't know if anybody else is able to, but we did send out an invite to the grand opening that we're doing of our firing range down for the sheriff's office tomorrow, so hopefully anybody that can attend from the council, feel free to, and hope to see any of you down there.
What time will that be?
It starts at 11 o'clock in the morning. If you're going to be able to go get up with Patrick, I think maybe he might be hitchhiking with Malcolm tomorrow.
Aye.
So we'll get y'all packed in there. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Captain.
That brings us to the consent agenda. I will need a motion to approve.
Just a quick on the consent agenda, because we added two things, just, I'm not real concerned, the street acceptance for Chris Smart Phases Four and Five, were those private streets, or were those the public streets that just were turned over by the developer? Do you know? Does anybody know?
Yeah. Go ahead, though.
Yeah, it was just streets that's turned over by the developer, that's all.
So?
Yeah.
They do have private streets in there, don't they? Some?
No, no. They have, we have some state streets that still are state-owned.
State, okay.
But it's mostly town streets now.
Okay, all right.
I'm sorry, there is one private street left, and that is the one that comes off Ottawa Road, which is called Chris Smart Drive. That is still considered private, but eventually, we will take that over as well.
Okay, thank you. I'll just clarify that.
Still need a motion.
No move.
Ms. Cohen's made the motion to approve, all in favor? Motion carries unanimously. There's no public hearing tonight. That brings us to Old Business, Item A, Committee Meeting Liaison Update. We'll start with one, fire tax fee. That would be Mr. Morse and Mr. Seadeck, who's going to take the floor?
Mr. Seadeck.
Okay, I'll go ahead and take stab at it, and Johnny is here tonight to bail us out if we don't report correctly. Simply, just to give you some background information, there were three studies that took place the last couple of years. One was done, or requested by Union County Board of Commission in regard to looking at fees, tax versus fees, and also two that were conducted by a consultant that Johnny hired. And also Johnny did, he did a couple of presentations, he came before council a few, three months ago, and he kind of went over some invoices and showed us, you know, the difference between fees for large commercial versus small commercial. I think he covered the entire thing, including residential, too. Where are we going with this? I think the county was advocating to add one more district and look at and have this study for the entire county. And what we have in the entire county, we have a rural area, and we also have densified area where we at on the western side. So I think what Johnny and his consultant bring in before council and the jurisdiction is sort of a regional fire strategic plan, not necessarily that include the entire county, but for our region right here because we're densified. So the intent for that is just to have a better service, better plan, look at the densified area without looking at the entire county, because there is a difference between east and west. So we did attend Councilmember Morse and Councilmember Hader and myself, we attended a presentation that was done by the consultant last week, and we do have it, it's a few slides, I'm not sure if council is interested in looking at it, the second one, Mike. Johnny, I think the intent right now is to take the content and the result of that study and take it a step further. And what would that be, possibly maybe a meeting with Union County, and our elected official meet with Union County and discuss with them, you know, east versus west, and what's the best solution for our densified area? And maybe elevate it one step higher, is take it to Raleigh and see, you know, all that general statue stuff when it comes to fire department, which is, I'm not familiar with. But if you'd like to make any comment on that.
I got a feeling you want me to talk.
Definitely.
Even though I didn't want to. I got that feeling.
So the gist of it is, is like Patrick said, we're looking at a regionalized system, and that's what the consultant came back, and let me give you a little history on that, on that study itself. That was done, started two years ago, year and a half ago, and at that time, each council, Indian Trail, Stallings, Lake Park, and Hemby Bridge councils all signed off on this study. So this wasn't something that the fire departments, we did spearhead it, but we got the buy-in from all those different councils. So what it was looking at is what's the best way to provide fire protection to, let's say, the western part of Union County over time. So what it came back with was a regionalized service. So the next step in that process is to create the strategic plan, which during the strategic planning process will include businesses, citizen, and elected official input into that process, along with, of course, the fire departments. So the legislation Patrick's talking about is if you, if all the councils decide to sign interlocal agreements, move forward a regional system. interlocal agreements, move forward a regional system, it would require some buy-in at the legislature at the state. So it would be creating something along the lines of a water authority to provide fire protection. So it would be a fire authority. The legislation currently allows for that, but we would still probably have to make some changes in Raleigh. So depending upon which way this fire study or this strategic plan moves forward, that'll kind of drive the direction of which funding mechanism to go with and how that works. As far as the county study, it was slated to be back last month, still hadn't came back. So nothing's been presented. The budgets were approved at the last county meeting for a fiscal year 19, so they're moving forward with that. They're still under the $100 fee. So nothing's changed to their fee structure. I know they're looking at the sixth district that Patrick was talking about. What they're looking at doing, there's five tax districts in the county, there's 17 fire departments in Union County. Okay, there's five, and that's not counting the city of Monroe. So 17, five are tax districts, one variation or the other. The balance are fee districts. So what they're looking at doing is creating a sixth service district to collect tax in all those fee districts. If you take a look at the Union County budget, what it shows you in there is you pay, if you live in Hemby Bridge's fire district, you pay over one cent countywide fire tax. Hemby Bridge gets none of that. You pay a five cent or a 4.8 cent Hemby Bridge fire tax, and that's the money that funds us. The one cent tax, it shows you in that budget where it all goes. Majority of it goes to the eastern part of Union County, Wingate and Marshall. That's the two largest, you know, collectors of that countywide tax. So what we're looking at doing is coming up with a means, at the rate that we're growing, we can't continue to provide the service. We provide the service based on part-time help. So as we grow more and more, the call volumes continuing to skyrocket, we can't meet the needs, you know, moving forward with part-time help. And that's the reality of it. So we got to find the means to move to the next step, like Patrick said. So when we start down that road, I could go out and hire full-time people today if I wanted to, but understand that I can't give them any benefits. That's why we need the municipal support in order to get into the local government retirement system. So hence why I'm at the municipal level. So we're going to have two choices moving forward, the way this thing goes. So we're either going to have to try to go at it individually, so Indian Trail will have to go at it, Stallings will have to go at it, Lake Park, whatever, will have to go at it, or you're going to have to dissolve that service and turn it over to the county. And I don't think that's really the best plan for us. We've seen how some of the other things have gone. So I would prefer that the municipals continue to control their own services inside their boundaries, but, you know, that's the decisions that's got to be made moving forward, and that's what this strategic plan is going to show us. Y'all are all business folks, so you're very familiar with business plans. That's what a strategic plan is, is basically a business plan moving forward. Any questions?
Thank you, Johnny.
Is that good?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Johnny.
I wouldn't have done it without you.
Anything more to add, Patrick or Jerry?
Yes, sir. That's all that I got.
Yeah, attending that meeting, it really opened my eyes to a growing need that we're going to have here, and that is with fire coverage. With, if you don't have adequate fire coverage, you're not going to draw in the businesses that are looking to that as a service. I mean, that's part of our infrastructure. And, you know, I come from a family where my dad was a volunteer fireman as well, and, you know, there's nothing worse than to watch someone's home burn down because you have lack of personnel to go fight that fire. It can, you know, it can severely impact us through economic growth without adequate fire protection. And, you know, that's, to me, that's one of the big roles of government, is police and fire services. And so we are having conversations with Lake Park, Hemby Bridge, Stallings, excuse me, Stallings and Lake Park, and, you know, possibly down the road, we could create a fire tax district for these municipalities in this area. There, you know, there's a lot of benefit, but again, this is just the initial discussions, and I've already had a few questions in my own mind regarding, let's say, you have one municipality that decides that they do want to build a lot of tall buildings and another municipality that doesn't, how are you going to fairly tax each municipality to support the equipment? But, you know, that's probably getting a little ahead of ourselves. So anyways, there'll be more, more coming on this.
Thank you, Mr. Morse. That brings us to Cronto. Mr. Morse, you're up.
Well, I probably don't have much to add with Mr. Cooksey and Ms. Fielding. I do want to thank Ms. Fielding for taking the time to go out there, I believe it was Albemarle on Tuesday?
Yeah, Albemarle.
And to update folks on Facebook as well. I saw that notification. The last CRTPO meeting, we didn't have a quorum because Charlotte decided not to show up, and they have, they controlled 31 of the votes. That said, we did discuss business, a lot that was covered, but something that wasn't covered was the Strategic Transportation Corridor, which is 74. And that extends from I-26 in the western part of the state to Wilmington. So there was some concerns with our, by our county commissioners and Monroe regarding, you know, the rumor that 74 was going to become an interstate. But the way they're approaching, at least for our area, is the bypass Monroe Expressway, that's really part of that strategic corridor plan. And so we're going to, you know, 74 will be a super street, but not an interstate. Something else that was discussed was Waxall Bypass and how it negatively impacts a tourist attraction down there. So they are reviewing that as well. And then we also discussed allocating funds from the STBG-DA to the STBG-FLEX, which is, I'm learning that there's a lot of pots of money, and certain pots of money are, they are specific as far as what they can be used for, and there are some, the STBG-FLEX fund, as it sounds, it's more flexible, so you can use monies to do other things that aren't so tightly controlled by bureaucratic red tape from the federal government. But most of it was, most of our meeting was just discussionary, and really it was more about the northern part of Mecklenburg County and southern Iredale.
I'd just like to add a little bit about our involvement representing the residents with North Carolina DOT. We do have it three levels of involvement with CRTPO and North Carolina DOT. We have it at the elected officials level, which is Mr. Morse attend that meeting. We also have the TCC, which is another committee for technical staff that represent every community, and we do have Todd on our engineer that attend that. And then there is another meeting, two middle level, that I attend, and we also keep up with their, with their staff in Albemarle Road, so we do communicate on daily basis sometimes. So I just want to add little comfort to you, let you know that we're continuously communicating with the folks. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Was that all, Jerry?
Yeah.
Okay. That brings us to planning. Mr. Head, floor's yours, sir.
Yeah, I attended the planning board meeting last Tuesday, and on the agenda was one, actually, it's only a zoning request, zoning map amendment request currently. It's eight parcels totaling approximately two acres, 1.94 acres, from single-family, low-density SF1 to light industrial. The applicant is looking at constructing a building for transportation purposes, looking at probably eight to 10 trucks, repair facility, and it's really over the road, so the trucks would be out most of the time. That was approved, I believe, five to two, if I'm not mistaken. And then there was a short update on where we are with the UDL update, and also a secret shortcut, small area plan update. So you want me to go ahead and go into the next one?
Yes, sir. You can go into your reliable transportation system.
All right, reliable transportation systems for smart growth. Basically what this is, and we've talked about it a couple of times, this was our third meeting, I believe, third or fourth meeting. We actually met in the evening, and it's really trying to share with municipalities, it's different than the quad. It kind of was an extension of the quad. We've had members of, this past meeting was, like I said, in the evening, and based on results of everybody, we think that probably will continue in the evening. That allows us, not just us retirees, but allows people that work during the day. So we get a broader membership. And this past meeting, we had Stallings, we had ourselves, we had Wesley Chapel. Usually we have someone from Weddington, but unfortunately he had a late emergency meeting that, or actually, it was taking his kids someplace, down to Greenville. Out of that, we talked about a number of things of sharing, for example, new developments so that we all know what's coming on either side of us. We talked about sharing TIAs. I think the biggest thing that came out of this, and one that I think that really had some meat into it, is sharing contracts. So as an example, paving. If we just have one municipality with, say, three roads, now we add another three or four municipalities to five or six roads, you know, the cost goes down. That was probably the one big thing that came out of that. We'll continue to meet, we'll have a meeting set up here shortly, minutes are coming out, and I really like the direction of where this meeting went. Jerry attended, of course, Patrick attended, so either you have any more comments on that?
No, Michael, I think the contract item is very valuable and important, not only resurfacing, we could do pavement marking, we could do reflectors, we could do drainage if they cross between one jurisdiction to another. Overall, because we do suffer sometimes as small jurisdiction, we can't get contractors, but if we enlarge the project, sometimes it will draw more contractors into our area. So I thought that item was a very good item that we, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
No, I'm done.
The only other thing, when Jerry and I were at the fire tax meeting, we visited with Cherry Clark, who's the village administrator for Lake Park, and we're going to invite her as a representative. I mean, she's right in the middle of Indian Trail, and I think it's only appropriate. And she's very interested in coming as well, so that's all I have.
Okay. That brings us to the Monroe Road Super Street. Mr. Sadek?
Thank you, sir. I guess this is the big-ticket item. I've received a letter from Scott Cole from Division 10 in regard to the results of the traffic impact analysis that they've done. The traffic impact analysis that was done originally in 2015, they looked at a traffic volume for 2035, but after we met at First Baptist and some of the residents requested, actually, they did not like the super streets, but they requested additional studies. So DOT went and did the study, and they came back with their results. Simply, Monroe Road is failing as two-lane roadway right now, and it has to be either four-lane divided or super street. I do have the documentation, it's a very lengthy one, where they did counsel every traffic, every intersection, and we will make this available to anybody that needs it. But the result of the study, both alternatives are comparable, but if you look in detail into some of the signalized intersections and the level of each direction, you will see that, I don't want to take sides here, but the signalized intersection with the four-lane boulevard will have a probably worse level of service than the super street, but not much for the analysis that they did for 2040. The only difference between, there are two differences right here. If they move along with the four-lane boulevard, there will definitely be a lot of geometric improvements at every intersection. Let me use one, for example, Brandon Oaks. And geometric improvements that I'm talking about, they'll be adding lane, like right turn, left turn, and that will impact the entrance to the subdivision, it will also impact storm drainage, et cetera, et cetera. So that was not done in the first concept. So if you weigh the benefit of the super street versus the impact of these improvements at every signalized intersection, definitely anybody probably will select the super street. I'm not advocating that you should pick the super street, but I'm thinking that North Carolina DOT moving with the super street. The reason why is because in addition to the level of service, the super street will increase safety, it provides refuge areas for pedestrians, also it will give better progression for the through movement, which is on Monroe Road, and also will provide additional capacity. So receiving this letter, reading it, looking at the analysis, I could see that North Carolina DOT will move forward with the super street. If the town residents or council would like to take it a step further by bringing Scott Cole to do the presentation for us, or to talk about the two different alternatives, he'll be more than happy to do that. And also, he could probably tell us which way they're moving forward, but I could tell that right now that they're moving forward with the super street.
Thank you, Patrick. David?
I have a couple of questions, Patrick. Did, is this the first that anybody's been notified of it? Has anybody in the town been notified other than you?
No, I think they reacted to the resolution that we submitted, Stallings and us, so I'm pretty sure the town manager for Stallings received the same letter, too.
Well, what I'm, I guess what I'm asking...
I'm the only one that received this letter so far, David, so I'm planning on...
So no one knows?
No, sir, nobody knows.
I know it'd come to a shock to some people, you know, we did have the resolution that where the, you know, the residents had spoken up and said they preferred the four-lane, but the people specifically that need to be notified, did by chance DOT talk with some of the citizens that were most concerned about the super street in reference to their properties? Did they come out there and, do you know, and talk to them and make, do you know if they made any kind of a concession for them? I know, and you know particularly, some of the people that were, you know, most upset with losing their property and thought maybe there was an alternative plan for the super street. Do you know if they worked any of those out with them?
Yes, according to Scott Cole, two residents, they've resolved these issues in front of their properties, and Mrs. Jones is probably one of them, and the second one, Mr. Kilo.
Yeah, those were the two main, the two main ones.
These are the two main ones that we continue to receive questions from them. According to Scott, they adjusted the alignment in front of the Kilos, and also moved that bump a little bit in front of Mrs. Johnson. But these are the only two residents that I received comments from, and they continue...
They were two of the ones that were most, I think, most outspoken, so thank you. I'm curious, I need, I want to talk to them, too, to make sure they're, you know, how they feel about it. So there was also a gentleman that has the really nice house down from Mr. Kilo, that beautiful... Hopefully, they made, because they were going to have to take his house, take it out. Hopefully, they didn't have to do that. So I guess those are just, those are questions I have for D O T. And I guess maybe Mr. Kilo and Ray can maybe answer some of those questions for us, and Ms. Jones?
I will also reach out and find out if there are any other people that they had issues, and he helped them with that, David. So that's the next step.
And I think it's important for the residents to know that Town of Indian Trail has nothing to do with that road. It is a state-owned road, state-owned decision. And I noticed the other day, you read social media, and you read on there about how miserable things are on, because 74 is making a lot of changes. You can't make left-hand turns, you can't do that. And a lot of people are mad at the Town of Indian Trail and staff. And really, we have nothing, we have no decision in any of that whatsoever. And so, you know, if you know somebody and they're mad, I particularly think that it's all going to be for the good. So hopefully, that's all we can hope for, is it's all for the good. So anyway, that's my comment.
And the same case for this project, too, David. You know, we try to tell the residents that they're not familiar or have not talked to D O T yet, that it's a D O T roadway, and they need to take that with D O T.
Patrick, quick question. I know Monroe Road is slated for the super street or and/or the express, the falling road. In regards to what's happening on 74, have you been or town staff been receiving a lot of complaints or concerns about what's going on there directly? Are you aware of any, have they reached out to the town, to you and other employees?
I yield to Mike on this one. The first day, we received a lot, but it kind of calmed down as they start using it and get used to it. And I think that's the case it's going to be for all four intersections on Independence. And the good thing about Independence right now, it kind of gives our resident an idea what's going to happen on Monroe Road. So Mike, if you want to add to that?
Yes, sir. We have heard from a number of residents that are concerned. One of their main concerns was that there just wasn't enough education done before the switch was made or the lanes weren't as clearly marked as they would wish. But we have also heard from a number of people who feel that it is moving traffic through more smoothly. So we, and we've tried to respond to as many of those comments as we can. We put some of that educational material on our social media and website. And it's actually still up on our website. Just maybe if people are coming across it for the first time, they can go there and see kind of how this is happening. And we'll continue to do that as they move forward on the next stage of that super street project on 74 to the other intersections.
Because the reason I say that is the town, I think, does a really good job of, if you sign up for the alerts, anything going on in the town, you get it. As soon as I get it, I go and I post it on, I'm not a Facebook guy, but I post it on Nextdoor and so forth, just to try and give residents some warning. I come from Charlotte every day, and I use this. I go down to the Wesley Chapel, right down by the Lowe's, that's where I take the turn. And in being honest with you, I think this thing is working well. But that's my own opinion from where I'm coming from. I just wanted to kind of guess, just in the event that the Monroe Road project does go, the Monroe Road project does begin, kind of what we should anticipate and figure out how we can maybe get some advance warning. But you're not going to always reach everybody, right? Because people have other things that they do.
All right. I think that's an excellent point, counsel.
Thank you. That brings us to the Veterans Memorial Garden. Mr. Cohen, Mr. Sadek, who's going to take the lead on that?
David, I'm, you?
Yeah, I can speak for the golf tournament and the people helping for the golf tournament, which has carried over into a lot of, a lot more than the golf tournament. We're getting a lot of people donating, not just to play golf, but just to vote, just to help the memorial. But the report on the golf tournament is going well. It's a lot of work. We've got 22 teams right now, it's a full field. We can always use a couple more, but it's full, it's a full field. We got three $1,500 donations in the last week. And you can come out and see who these people are. And we've gotten a lot of $100 whole donations, a lot of foursomes, a lot of companies chipping in, and people just paying just to be part of it. A great community effort. Something that we're going to talk about in a minute is the, coming up is the Rotary Club. It's been very helpful in helping us do this. And I thank my fellow council members who have helped in this, the mayor. All of you have contributed, and I much appreciate it. Some of town staff is really a bugger to death. Thank you, Mike Parks, for putting up with my phone calls. And Alicia for trying to follow the money trail of where, whether or not people have paid to play golf and their donations. But guys, come out Saturday, it starts at nine o'clock. We have lunch at about between, I'd say around two o'clock, wouldn't you think? And you're welcome to come out and have lunch with us, make a contribution, it'd be good, I promise you. Some good barbecue and just have some good fellowship. We've got some good prizes that you can sell and auction on. You can come in, bid on them. Some stuff from restaurants all the way to, somebody donated the telescope the other day, and it's still in a brown box. And it's probably not worth much in a brown box. Somebody's going to have to put that thing together, and it's not going to be me. So if anybody wants to put a telescope together, let me know.
I just put one together last week, yes.
You'll see it on your doorstep tonight. I'll go get it and bring it to you. But anyway, much thanks to the town, much thanks to everybody who's contributed to it. It's going to be fun. And I think before it's all over, we're going to raise a lot of money coming. And that's a good feeling, to get the money from the residents itself. I know the tax money, if we built some of it with tax money, still comes from the residents. But when we do it this way, it's also coming directly from the people of the town. And it feels like that it's ours, and it is everybody's. But anyway, I'm real tickled with it. So Patrick, you got anything else to add?
Yes, sir. Little change that I like to share with council, we call it value engineering. The last concept that I shared with council, we elevated that center section, and we had a ramp that takes you up there. Well, we kind of made a little change to save some money and make it a bit bigger. So, and to make it less, to lessen the process and don't have to go through this review process with Union County. So I got rid of the ramp, and we also lowered the centerpiece, but we flipped the centerpiece to the outside and the outside piece to the inside. And what that does, it will help the project to be built faster, less expensive, and then less review process with Union County. This morning, staff, Adam and Mike Wright, probably you've seen the stakes up front, they staked it. And we should be excavating soon, put in the drainage system. And there are a couple pieces out there that we can't do, it has to be fabricated. It will take probably 45 to 60 days, because this is outside the plant. But we are moving forward with it, as long as the donation comes in. But we do have the funding for it, so we'll use the funding to get it built. And as we get donation, we'll substitute that pocket of money. Just wanted to give you an update, and I hope you're okay with the changes. I think the changes makes it bigger, better, and more manageable, and better for A D A, too. So, does it look okay? Do we have a go-ahead to continue? And the coloring right there that you see, it all depends on the wine that I was drinking when I was designing, redesigning it. But thank you for allowing us to move forward with that, and we will continue moving forward with it.
Mr. Morse?
What is the timeline now, Patrick, for construction?
It all depends on the balusters and the cap and the bottom of the round circle on the outside. So Adam will be contacting the fabricator. They should give us, I would say, between 45 to 60 days. This is just to get the material. So anything beyond that, it should be already built. So the inside wall, we could do that in here. And the pad, we could pour it, the drainage. So that's the only piece that could hold that project. And sometimes they delay it, sometimes if they're not busy, they provide it in a better timely manner. So I keep council posted on the schedule of the project. But we are moving forward, so the countdown will start. To answer your questions, I would say we could put it out there probably within three months.
I wanted a quick thing, Adam. Michael War called me today, and I know you know Michael. And also, before I forget to tell you, he could, you know, what business he's in, he offered to help build this with, out of the goodness of, I'm sure, I don't know how much, but put forth a lot of effort and either give you a really good deal or do some of it pro bono or whatever. But anyway, right, call him, I don't know what he can do, but he may can do a lot. You're the expert on that, so, or you and Patrick?
Sir, no problem.
Is that all in that presentation?
Yep.
Okay. That brings us to new business, Union West Rotary. Mr. Cohen, this is your item?
Yes, I had the pleasure of, well, let me back up for a minute. I've been here for a long time, and I've heard a lot about the Rotary Club. And to be honest with you, I didn't know a lot about what they did, but I had heard a lot. So we were doing this golf tournament, and I knew they did a golf tournament themselves, and they do a very successful one. So I figured if they do a real successful one, and I'm trying to do this one, I'm going to call and get some advice. And I did. And boy, did I run into a wealth of knowledge and a much appreciated group of people who did everything in their power to make us more successful and make the town more successful. And in doing so, I went to a meeting Thursday and learned more about it, more about what they did. And Pam DeMeyer, Miss Pam DeMeyer is the president right now. And Larry Helms will be the new president. And I started finding out all the different things that they did for the town. And I've got a list here, and I'm not going to read them, but I could go on and on and on. But they built the, I know they built the park, they built that shelter at the park, the amphitheater. They've built so many different things and done so many things for the town. They're going to be big contributors to the Veterans Memorial. And they're also asking for a grant for it. So they may contribute quite a bit of money for it. And I'm going to let them, I'm not going to steal their thunder, because I think they're, I think they're going to surprise everybody in this room with all the hard work that they're going to put into doing it. And I just wanted to recognize them tonight and not to go on about too much, because when they come back with what they're going to give the town, I think will be a very special night for the, whether it be a month or two months or whatever. And we come back in here, and I would really like to recognize the Rotary Club for everything that they do and all the hard work. And they're just good people. They are just good people that are here to help kids and adults in the town. And man, it just opened my eyes to what they did. And if anybody gets a chance, I know they're always looking to get new members. If anybody's interested in joining the Rotary Club and doing some great activities for your town, I suggest it very highly, and I'm considering it myself, to join that club, because I just, I just think it's great. And it meets here, does it meet every Thursday? Once a month?
No, no, every Thursday, David, down here, around 7:30.
You get breakfast, too, so. Anyway, I just wanted to put in a plug for somebody that does really good things for our town.
Thank you, David. That brings us to item B, land development phasing. Mr. Sadek?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This item is directly related to the issues that we're having at Heritage, the development at Heritage. Steph and I, we start talking about phasing. And it appears that some of us still have any issues with the terminology and how does phasing could be applicable to in-ude development. Simply what we're asking when we meet with developers, when planning, engineering, and myself meet with new developers, what we try to do is, we try as much as we can, if a development has five phases as an example, and it becomes approved, the entire development becomes approved. But what we would like to see the developer is taking it one phase at a time, for many, many reasons. And some of the reasons, I'm going to talk about the reasons and then get back to the rest of the phasing issues. This is, what you're looking at right here, this is the parcel, Heritage parcel, between the two neighborhoods, which is Taylor Glen and Todd, help me out, the other one? Sheridan. So Sheridan on the left, that's Sheridan, and Heritage on the right. Luckily, this parcel, this is the front of the parcel, I would say part of phase one. It didn't, it wasn't vegetated, it didn't have a lot of trees in it. But as we get further into the property, they had to cut a lot of trees. So one thing I would say about this development right here that maybe we should have never allowed is for them to go out there and do massive clearing and grubbing from one end to another. And that's what's driving right now to all the issues that we're having. So if you look right here at this picture, if this picture is in phase one and they kept this buffer between the two built-out residential neighborhood, that is fine. But you could tell and see that really not enough to keep noise and vibration and dust and all that stuff. So we want to try to tackle these issues with the phasing process. We've been in communication with them every single day. Our inspector, sometimes, too, they go out there and they keep up with the contractor is doing. They bring to them, to their attention, issues that we're having. If it's dust, you could see, they tell them you need to call the water truck, you need to water the roadway to protect both neighborhoods. And we did the same thing with the blasting, if you remember, when council signed off on the blasting ordinance. So blasting is another part of phasing. And you could see, Michael, I think this is a video, I'm not sure if you, this is not, I didn't take it as a video. That's fine, that's because it went to PDF. But this is how far the blasting was away from the houses. But we resolved that issue, and the contractor is working closely with us and updating the neighborhood. What you're looking at right here, this is somebody's garden. And I think this is in Taylor Glen, if I'm not mistaken, Todd, I can't tell. But you could see there was no erosion control to protect this backyard and the garden from when we had bad storm. So this is the stuff that they complain about. And you could see right now, it gets into backyards and further areas, if you could count that. I mean, to the extent that even their walkways and their backyard gets impacted. And that's a violation to North Carolina D E N R, by the way. So immediately when we see something like that, we contact D E N R and ask them to come in and talk to the developer, because that's a violation. Again, every single day, our staff go out there. And you could see the extent when they don't have enough measures to protect the adjacent neighborhoods. Again, that's a phasing item, too. This is a big lesson learned, and we want to make sure it will not occur for any future development. These pictures right here, they were sent to me by a representative from the neighborhood. And I think Mr. Morris knows who I'm talking about. But you could see the dust. I mean, children can't play, the house gets dust on it, the cars and everything. I mean, this is like a sandstorm in Phoenix, Arizona. But that's because we did not have any rain. We have to work with the contractor, we can't shut him down when the weather is good, and he can't work when the weather is bad. So it's a matter of communication with him and continue to ask him to water the soil when it gets powdery like that. But you could see how far it gets away from the site, especially if it's a windy day. This is typical car that it was impacted. Again, somebody takes his car and get it washed for $15, $20, and you come back and that's what you get on it. This one is a good picture, too. You could tell that those houses were very impacted. You could tell that those houses were very impacted by the grading work. We are getting closer right now to, they're paving out there, so there is some relief. But the construction activities for, for the homes, you have four, 400 homes that is going to be there for a while. So I guess communicating between the residents, us and the developer, we could do a better job. And you could see right now, they're beginning to put their curb in gutter, and I think they paved part, part of that, too. Is that the last slide, Michael? But that, that's what we mean by phasing. We, we have to, if we approve a development, we need to make it very clear to the developer that we don't want you go out there and shave the entire parcel, we want you to keep a good buffer, where you need to do the erosion control measures. If you have to connect to the sewer line, that's the only areas where we allow you to have a road to the sewer line. And in regard to street acceptance, too, Todd is working with every developer right now, just to make sure. Also, if, if they finish one phase, we don't want the construction trucks to continue going over that phase and deteriorate the, the roadways. And by the time this development is complete, if they don't really route the, the construction traffic properly, we're going to end up having bad streets. And we do have a few developments right now that they were into this type of construction, and we still suffer in getting the contractor to go out there and repair the street. One last item, in our new land development manual, we're adding another layer of asphalt to, to, to the requirement, to the cross section. Developer might not like it, but we're not in a point to accept any deteriorated streets by the time they finish the development. And that's a good way to protect the, the home buyers. All these people that go out there and buy these brand-new homes, by the time the homes are done, you, you'll see that some of the streets are deteriorated. And it's our job to make sure that protect those home buyers when they, when we accept the street, that they're, they're up to our standards. But that's, that's the phasing process that we're trying to implement right now, and Heritage was a, a big, big example of that. And I just wanted to share that with council to let you know that we, we continuously communicating with the developer and both subdivision. Mr. Cohen been there before, and I know Mr. Morris been there this weekend, so we will continue working with them.
Patrick, in regards to the phasing, when some of these applications come up, how is, are you and Rocks and engineering and all these guys going to make sure that that's part of the approval process? Meaning that when we vote on it, when we approve it, that that's stipulated in there so that these guys have to, or, not guys, but these companies have to adhere to that policy?
Yeah, the, the process begins when they bring that first concept that shows all the phases.
Yeah.
This is where Rocks, Todd and myself, we bring that to their attention and see if somehow it can't be phased in a manner that we could accomplish all those items that I mentioned.
All right. So it's from the inception?
Yes, sir.
All right.
The first sheet we get, that's when we bring it to their attention.
Okay.
We didn't do that a lot in the past, but we're going to do it on every development from now on.
All right.
Just a follow-up question. What are the consequences if they don't follow the phasing?
I think, I don't see, the first thing they're going to say, that it's not economically feasible for them to mobilize and, and do it in phases. But that, that's a choice we, we have to take, that's a stance we have to take to, to make sure that all these items are prevented. But the project can fully, you know, all four or five phases can be approved, but we're going to try our best, Michael, to make sure that they do it phase at a time. And that's something we could add to the requirement. I mean, sometimes it works, it depends on the design, the design of that particular development. They have different designs. So let's say if they have one arterial in the middle, that they have to access a sewer or water or anything like that, we don't allow them to do that. But we want, we want to try to let them minimize the amount of clearing and grubbing as much as possible. And it's, it's, it's not going to be easy, we're, we're going to have some of them rejecting the idea, but, I mean, we, we could do it one phase at a time and say that, that's how it's going to be, and that's a stance we have to take, and we could include that either in the land development manual or maybe in the UDO. If we feel that we're going to run into something like that. If we, if we feel that the development is small and we don't have to do that, then we'll be okay with that. I mean, we, we have to look at the design itself and the location.
Yeah, I understand that, and I don't know if, if it's possible, but, you know, is there any way we can find them if they don't follow the phasing?
Well, we, we, we could maybe, and I'll, I'll let Karen comment on it, but we, we could generate some kind of a policy, town policy, or maybe an ordinance. Karen?
And I don't know if anybody else is...
Well, I don't know that we had, since we have a policy, we don't even have a policy, so, so what are we going to find them for if they, if they don't, if we're not?
Generally, what we'd look for probably is erosion control measures and pollution, you know, encroachment on neighboring lots. Those are the types of things we could look to notice violations for. And then I'm not sure what the, the new land development manual will say, but there will be construction techniques that they'll be required to follow, and if they're violating those, that would be a violation. For instance, if they're required to keep streets wet, to avoid dust, and they're not doing that, we could notice a violation. So hopefully, as the course of the UDO is drafted, we will have some enforcement mechanisms included in that, in that process.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea. What is presently, what's the, the residence's recourse, you know, to, to damage that's being done? Whether they need to have their houses pressure washed or, or the whatnot?
Usually, if we get any complaints or claims from the residents, because we really don't get, interfere, except just making sure that they're complying with the UDO and the land development manual and the inspection process, we hope, we would ask them to turn, let's say you have 15 claims, to turn it to HOA, then HOA will turn it to the developer, because he, he does have insurance that could cover stuff like that. And if we need to get involved in, you know, kind of passing the message or, you know, extending the communication, we don't, we don't mind doing that. But them submitting the claims to us, that's something we don't do, and I think we don't want to do. I think it should go directly to the contract.
Yes, any, any, any claim for, for, for example, a picture of the, of the erosion invasion with the, with the water going into the garden, that would be a trespass claim of some sort that the neighbor could take directly against the contractor.
Can that information be conveyed to the, especially those two communities, to their HOAs, so that, because that's the big question right now, is who do they contact regarding all of the, the dust, as far as the, the economic side of it?
Yeah, that's, and that would be, that would be the contractor directly. So that's who would, the developer is who they need to get in touch with, but...
When we get pictures like that and complaints like that, immediately, myself and staff, we fire them to the contractor. He does respond, and he did on several occasions. But if we do get claims, too, we, we use the same thing, we just pass it to the contractor.
So we've reached out to the HOA presidents and to give them direction as far as if they have residents in those different HOAs, you know, how to, to, to deal with the claims?
Well, we never discuss claims, but we dealt almost with everybody in that, in those two neighborhoods. We do have list of names, and sometimes what they do is they go through the, via, via HOA to us, and sometimes they contact us themselves. We do have a spreadsheet of large number of names that we communicated with, but we don't mind maybe reaching out to each HOA of every community and kind of let them know a little bit about the process.
Yes.
I think what, that's what you're asking for, we'll be more than happy to do that.
That all, with that?
Yes, sir.
That brings us to the public comments policy. Aaron, it's yours.
Yes, I was asked by council to look into the town's public comment policy, and the town has had a public comment policy that, and I don't remember the original date, but it's been in for quite some time, at least 2009, I believe. I did make some, some amendments and sort of tighten it up a little bit, but for the most part, this is a reiteration of the policy that has been in effect. One thing that I will point out, if you look on section 3L, we will be asking the town to post this paragraph that's bolded, and the mayor read it this, read it earlier today before public comment policy. We'll have that posted above the sign-in sheet, so people can be familiar with some of the rules. And then also, we'll ask the mayor to read sort of the, an outline of the basic instructions related to the public comment policy. And it has most to do with the time of, the time of speaking, the fact that you can't change, or you can't hand your minutes to somebody else. And then we're talking about the decorum and the sort of topic, not topics, but the, the decorum and behavior by both the audience, members, council, and the speaker during the course of public comments, to keep this a positive experience for everybody. And tonight, we're just asking for your, go ahead to adopt it if you'd like to, and this is just a simple adoption of a policy, and that will be, become part of our regular town policy going forward. So it'd be a motion to adopt the amended public comment policy, if that's what the council would like to do.
If there's no questions?
Hold on a moment to review.
Okay, okay. Let council moment to review.
I'll make a motion that we approve, as presented.
Mr. Morris makes a motion to approve, to adopt the amended public policy, public comment policy. All in favor? Motion passes and adopted unanimously. Brings us to discussion items. Boarding committee appointments for vacant and expiring seats. Who would like to take the lead on that? Mr. Cohen, did you want to take?
I'll be glad to start it.
Okay.
First of all, bear with me just one second. Had everything here just a minute ago. I, I know Phil, you're here tonight, and we have your application for the, I believe it was the Stormwater, and we have a, an opening on the Stormwater Committee. Naturally, I can't find it, but I would like to, soon as I find your application, we'd like to nominate you for the Stormwater Committee. Does anybody have it?
What was it you're looking for?
Thank you. If you remember, Phil Stillwell lives in my neighborhood, he applied for the Stormwater earlier. So I guess if we want to do it this way, do I have any, can we just vote on, on Phil?
Yeah.
Yeah?
You want to make, you've made the motion, right?
The motion for, yeah.
Mr. Cohen's made a motion to accept Mr. Stillwell onto the Stormwater Committee. If there's no discussion, all in favor? That passes unanimously?
Is there a particular seat?
Yes, there a particular seat, so we can just say it for the record?
Yes, um, hold on, we'll, we'll find it.
Thank you, Mr. Morris.
I think there's, let's see, I would say...
Yes, three seats.
You got three seats, but, and none, and nobody is, none of these three people are coming back, so let's go with, and Shirley's not here, I was going to ask her a recommendation of who, whose place she'd take, but let's, let's have them just take the very first seat, seat three. I'm assuming he was notified. We went through this meeting the other day. Okay, the seat three.
Is there any other seats to be filled on any committees that the council would like to recommend?
As long as I got the floor, I'll, I'll, we've got Jan Brown, who's not returning on the planning board. And if, does anybody have any objection to moving Cheryl Mimi to his spot? She actually applied, I guess, for that seat?
I think that's a good idea.
Want to make the motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to appoint Cheryl Mimi from alternate two to seat number one, Jan Brown.
Mr. Morris has made that motion. If there's no discussion, all in favor?
We also have Dennis, Dennis Gay. His term, he's, for, he has renewed his application for another term, and I nominate Dennis Gay for his seat that he's already got.
For reappointment?
For reappointment, right.
The seat four.
Okay, just no discussion, all in favor of the nomination? Passes unanimously?
And then we have one more, the renewal, renewal application for Sidney Sandy. Renews for his seat on, also 630, I guess, for, for another three-year term.
Seat five.
And I'll nominate Sidney for, for that term.
If there's no discussion?
I've got...
Yes, sir.
I've got, you know, Sidney has, has missed four out of the last 11 meetings, which is, you know, better than a third of the meetings. So I have some issues of putting him back on a, at least on a permanent seat. You know, I, I think because of his absenteeism, I'm, I'm reluctant to put him back on, on a permanent seat.
Any more discussion? On that, Mr. Head's expressed concern. If not, the motion's still on the floor for Mr. Cohen's nomination for renewal of Mr. Sidney, Sadney. All in favor? Record stand, it's tied 2-2, and for the record also, that's, I know Mr. Sandy, and it's unusual for this to happen, he must have had a good reason. I'm going to take that at face value, and I'm going to approve his nomination and break the tie for Mr. Sandy.
That means he goes back to seat five, right?
Yes.
All right.
I believe there was one more person here in the audience that was, put an application for the Board of Adjustment renewal.
Oh, yeah.
Yes.
Is that Jeanette? Okay, Jeanette's here and has put in an application for renewal and has chair recommendation for Board of Adjustments if council cares to ask a question or chooses to accept her renewal.
I nominate her for, for seat...
You beat me to it.
If there's no discussion, Mr. Cohen's made the nomination. All in favor? Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Okay, and there's no others?
No.
At this time?
Mayor?
Ma'am?
Mayor, the clerk.
Oh.
The positions that are expiring, will they, what, what would be the status of those for?
I would...
Like seat four, Board of Adjust, what about...
Well, if staff puts out, has been putting out notices and accepting applications...
Like Judet Black?
They'll fill them as, as they come.
So seat one, Judet Black, are we going to, how should I proceed with that as of June 30, 18?
I would, I would, if council, if, if you can disagree, I would just reach out to them, see if they're going to seek renewal. Otherwise, remind them it's the end of their term, and after their term expires, if they're not, they're no longer on... not, they're no longer on the board. So we take active applications.
What seat were you referring to?
I'm looking at seat one, Judet Black, and I believe I heard Mr. Cohen say stormwater committee.
What, what committee for Blacks, sorry?
For the public safety and security, Judet Black.
Right.
And then also, Mr. Cohen indicated that Mr. Murphy, Baron, and Mosley will not be coming back. Is, should I assume that they're terminating? I, I thought that's what you said, I just need clarification on how to proceed.
No, I didn't say that, but I did say at the last meeting that somebody needed to contact those people, so I'm gonna leave, I'm gonna leave it at that for now, so...
Okay, so the clerk should do nothing with those expiring 218 until further direction?
I didn't say that either. I did, if I, if you would just put, just do, do, look, the seat is, is vacant because he didn't apply for the seat. Okay, are you talking about the stormwater committee? Okay.
I'm just referring to the terms that are ending in 2018 that were not discussed, do they just expire? Attorney Walter maybe can answer?
They just expire.
Is that not, is that not correct, Rocks? I mean, they expire, they're gone, right? You need to apply for the seat again.
Yeah, if you don't renew, they're gone.
Right.
If they're not appointed, the term just expires and there's no one in that seat.
There's no grandfathering.
That's correct.
Okay, they're done on the 30th. And Patrick, if you can, and Mike, if you can continue to solicit residents in any means to be involved?
So at the next meeting, these expiring terms would show up as vacant, on, at the next meeting, our next meeting in July?
That is, that is the way it works, yes.
These terms will now show up as vacant, because the people that are...
Except for the ones that were nominated.
Yes, yes, meaning the ones where people have not renominated themselves to be considered, they will show up on the next list as vacant.
The positions that expire in 2018 that council has not appointed someone to will show up as vacant?
Correct.
Whether they reapply or not, if you don't appoint them?
If you apply now, there's no way we're gonna vote you in now or recommend it until the next meeting, so, yes.
To answer your question, Mr. McIntyre, all these items, all the items that you see in gray, in green, that they expired next time, they'll be vacant on the spreadsheet.
Right.
Thanks, sir.
So if they show up?
Thank you.
For the next meeting?
If they show up, then they didn't, they didn't come in before the deadline, so they have to reapply and come back before council.
Hand them an application at that time.
That is correct.
They can see the watch.
Okay, thank you. That brings us to managers update. Mr. Sadek?
Just three quick items, we should be sending the manager's report this week, but I did share with council all the projects that we're working on right now, and the list was part of that email that I sent to Scott Cole. These are the hot items right now, because they do involve funding, exchange of roadways and all that. The second item is the town center project. The staff met with, with Type R and their partners today for the first meeting, and we will keep council updated. That projects and the Plyler apartment projects, we did request TIA for both of these projects, so as soon as we get the result. Also, we will talk to DOT, because at the present time, Unionville Indian Trail and Indian Trail Road West, they both DOT roadways, so that, we will get the North Carolina DOT's input before we make any move, but at the same time, we share it with council. And business as usual with the rest of the staff, that's all that I have for tonight. Mr. Mayor, unless council has any question?
Any questions? Nope, okay, that brings us to council comments.
Mr. Head?
Alright, we say it, but we, we mean it. Staff, top-notch. We couldn't do this without you, and, you know, I guess we're, we're halfway through the year, and I think we have accomplished a lot, we still got a lot to accomplish. My indoctrination orientation continues on a daily basis, and I thank all those that have helped me, and hopefully you will continue to help me. I guess for what it's worth, the super streets, I saw all the social media, so I actually went out that first day, and there was a lot of confusion. I saw a lot of cars trying to figure out, okay, so I'm in this lane, do I try to get back into the closest lane? It depends on where you're going. So, you know, there seemed to be some confusion. So last night, I went back out again, and it was a lot smoother, a lot smoother. I also, I went east beginning Thursday, and I found that there's a lot of bumpouts, a lot of super street intersections, and while the times I went, there wasn't a whole lot of traffic, but I didn't see a whole lot of issues. So I'm, I'm thinking that, you know, super streets may work. It was good to see the progression, just in five or six days, that I was gone, of how quickly people seem to get acclimated, so with that, I thank everyone for coming, I thank everyone for the presentations, I thought it was a very worthwhile meeting, and drive home safe. Thank you.
Mayor Alvarez?
Excuse me, thank you everyone for coming, thank you council. David, thanks for all the hard work on the golf tournament, all the volunteers and all the donors, the staff. It's coming along very nice. Don't forget, I believe we have a parade coming before our next meeting on the 4th of July, check with the town, there's still room for floats maybe, I won't know. I believe it's going the traditional route from the bank to the food lion, and it should be for, for a fun day, for a good reason. And Patrick, if you would, is there a way to get a list together of current apartments and proposed apartments, and where they're gonna be located, and how many units are proposed? And where? And if they've just been coming at us in clusters, that it's getting quite confusing? Something that the public can see, and we can see maybe a presentation at a meeting?
We do have the coverage in GIS, all we have to do is just update it, we'll be more than happy to do that, Mr. Mayor.
And would appreciate that. Other than that, Chase, wherever you're at, thank you for all you do, and keeping us safe and all the hard work out there, and see y'all next time. Everybody have a good night and God bless.
Dave Cohen?
Thank y'all for coming, see you Saturday, I hope, and have a good week and hope to see you at the parade. Thank you.
Mr. McIntyre?
Thank you everybody for coming, thank you town staff, Chase, thanks for all that you do. To all the people who volunteer on the various boards and committees in the town, thank you for that, that's really hard work, it's important stuff, and making the meetings and contributing to the town, we appreciate that. Thank you for coming and have a good evening.
And Mr. Morris?
First, I'd like to thank Ms. Fielding for her regular attendance and for her input, and I think if I could, I'd like to encourage you to, to perhaps consider serving on the transportation board since, since you're obviously involved with that, that issue. I think you'd be a great addition. Ms. Doc, I believe it's Ms. Dockery that spoke earlier about Heritage, you know, when, that's how you get results, if you see something, say something, and, and we have a very active council here, and we seem to be working well with the town manager and the staff, and they, they have our back, they, you know, we raise an issue, citizen raise an issue, and we carry to them, and, and you see results. The Snowball Cabin, I think half that money they collected was due to my mom. She, I invited her to, to go there on that Sunday, part of that fundraiser, and unfortunately, she said, "I can't eat anymore, 'cause I've already been there twice that day and once the day before." So we really appreciate the involvement, and, and it's very heartwarming to, to see the community getting involved in this veterans memorial. It was my hope, you know, from the beginning, that this is, it would foster this community goodwill, and, and I'm seeing it come to fruition, and I'm hoping we can keep that momentum going, and, and, you know, once, once the memorial is built, and we've sold plaques, and we funded it, I'd like to see us move on to another project, and, and just, it really is heartwarming with all the bad news you hear in the world, you see such good people. And y'all come out to the golf tournament if you can, it's, as you know, it's for a good cause, and thank you all for coming out tonight.
Thank you. That being said, we have a closed session. NCGS 143, 318, 1183, to protect attorney-client privilege, I need a motion pleased to go.
I'll make that motion.
Morris made the motion to go into closed session, all in favor? Motion passes unanimously. See you there, three minutes.
Motion to come on a closed session?
Mr. Morris has made the motion to come out of closed session, all in favor?
All am in favor.
Okay, any motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
McIntyre's made the motion to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye, aye.
God bless everybody, good night.
Alright.